Okay, I'm going to call this meeting of the Newington Board of Education to order at 6:00 PM. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move on to item C of our agenda, which is public participation. Our phone lines are open at 860-665-8736. We'll wait for a moment to see if anyone wants to call in at the beginning of our meeting. And while we're waiting, I'll just remind everyone talking tonight to please make sure to have your mic directly in front of you, to be talking directly into your mic. If you are off to the side of your mic, it does not get picked up for the video purposes and the audio doesn't come through. I talked to some folks from NCTV after our last meeting and they said, "While I did a decent job because the mic is, because I'm already looking at everyone, if anyone else tries to look at me or look down the table at someone else, unfortunately, you lose the audio." So it's strange to talk straight ahead and not see anyone, but please do so. That is likely enough time to wait for the phones. If anyone calls in, we'll try to take it if we see it in the next couple of minutes. Otherwise, there would be an opportunity at the end of our meeting. And for anyone watching at home, and I'll try to point this out a couple of times, the full budget that we're going through line by line tonight is online on the Newington Public Schools website, which is npsct.org. So please go ahead and look at that online so you can follow along tonight. I believe this is the third year that we've put it online for the public. So please take advantage of that so you're not confused by the numbers that are in different order than from the presentation from Dr. Collins last week. We'll move on to new business, which is item D, which is a review of programs. As board members notice in your white folders, this evening, there are some new budget pages that will need to get sifted in as we go through. I believe the very first one is a new budget page, so it's in your white folders. Everyone just, I just want to make sure everyone knows that before we go through with confusion. Everyone on the same page? Are we all aware that there's new budget pages for, I think, six, seven things? And we all have that so we can sift through together, and I'll try to point them out as we go through. But the first item on the agenda is education technology. That is the first yellow tab. Mr. Salerno will be presenting that category for anyone at home. That is, I believe that in the budget book, they're in alphabetical order, so it should, it's potentially the third one, and we'll give a minute for anyone to find through the education technology. We're going in a slightly different order than the books that we have tonight, so some of our administrators can come and go for their one program area instead of staying all night. And yes, Mr. Sylvia, thank you. Education technology, there is a new budget page that was given to us tonight. So if everyone can find that in their packet, make sure you switch it out with the old one, so we're all looking at the same thing. You know what? It's listed in mine, but I don't see it in my packet.
I believe it's English Language Arts, Mr. Scholman.
It does say ed tech on here.
It does. I don't have one.
On the memo, it says ed tech. Is there a new one or no? No, Mr. Salerno's saying no. False alarm? Mr. Jacobowitz?
That's the non-lapsing transfer, which does not appear on any of the pages. So that's not a budget change.
Very good. So we don't need to worry about that yet. Excellent.
The five big programs in special ed are the six pages.
Got it. All right. With that, I'm going to stop talking. Mr. Sylvia, if you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to know that as we're all trying to go through these pages and replace, are these, this information available online to the public?
The new pages are part of the online PDF that's up on our website.
Oh, excellent. Thank you very much.
We're just a little slower with our paper binders here. With that, Mr. Salerno, thank you for being here this evening. If you'd like to introduce yourself and the program.
Thank you, Mr. Scholman. I feel like the baseball hitter, the leadoff hitter right now, leading off budget season. It gives me great pleasure to introduce the budget proposed for the educational technology department. Some of our major goals, and this has really been reflected in the last three years in terms of our transformation and becoming a reference district for G-Suite for education, where a lot of districts across not only Connecticut, but across the nation are looking at us for what we are doing and the opportunities we are providing for kids. We're using our technology to enhance, extend, and improve student learning and to facilitate students' development as lifelong learners, productive citizens, and active participants in a technology global community. While we've spent a lot of time with our teachers, spending time with our teachers, providing professional learning, so that they are enabled with all the tools that they need to be armed with in order to provide these experiences to our students. We've also tried to foster an understanding of digital citizenship, problem-solving skills, and informational literacy through the design and applied research and production of content prepared through the use of technology.
If you want to just take, switch with Mr. Fries here or Mrs. Kraus. I was also reminded, and Mr. Sylvia, if you can also, I did the same thing, but we need to make sure our mics are off if we're not using them. They told me that might help as well.
Good to go. In terms of the description of the present program, we've transitioned Chromebooks through to grades two through 12. Just this past year, we went to the Chromebook model in grade two with great success, while grades K and one are still on the iPad model. In order to support this, our infrastructure has really been enhanced over the years. We need a strong infrastructure in order to provide these opportunities to our students. In terms of our improvements and changes, we've worked diligently on improving the K-8 technology literacy scope and sequence, continue to develop Common Assessments along to ISTI, which is the International Society for Technology and Education, and the SAMR model, which kind of measures our technology integration along the lines of substitution, augmentation, modification, and redefinition. And we're really trying to have experiences for our students that redefine and make learning different than it ever was before. Another thing is our professional learning. We've had to be unique with our professional learning. Over the last three years, we've provided learning experiences to have almost 150 Google certified educators in the district. So we've had a strong focus on technology integration within our professional learning. Two mandates that are unfunded that are coming our way this year. The first is the ADA Accessibility Compliance Mandate for District and School Websites. We're currently working on that. And also, July 1 of 2018, we'll have to abide by the Student Data Privacy Regulations, which will now go into effect after they were postponed in October. Moving forward, we always have to keep in mind replacing our one-to-one Chromebooks in grades three every single year. We also, we want to start replacing some of these devices over the next few years also. Also, annual funding to ensure the resiliency of the one-to-one technology initiative. This just does not apply to our students. We also have to keep in mind our teachers and their devices. And funding for district-wide applications and subscriptions is also another priority. As technology changes and evolves, we have to be on the cutting edge for it, and so we need to make sure that we're in place to have funds available for that. And then last but not least, additional staffing to address the educational technology support throughout the district with the individual needs in the classroom. I'd like to direct your attention now to the right-hand page. I'm going to go down to the 500 series, where we have our purchase services. You will see appropriation for 1718 was almost $300,000. This year, we have a proposal of $550,000. We're on a cycle right now where a lot of our support for infrastructure, networking, and subscriptions for applications within our district are now coming, coming up, so we have to have a focus on that. But you'll see down in the property series, down in the 700s, that the $887,000 has now been reduced to zero in terms of that. So this year's proposal is $1,898,191, a reduction from last year's.
I'm going to start just by saying for Mike and Mr. Brandon and Mrs. Stroh's benefit, and for those of us who haven't been on the board for as long, when we're looking at these five columns, and this might have been a good thing to say last week when we got the books before you went over them, you'll see the actual 1617. That's the number that's reflected in the CAFR, the Town's Audit, every year. We then have the appropriation from 1718, which, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Collins or Mr. Jacobowitz, but that's the amount that was modified after our December transfers. Correct. So this is not the same number that was finalized at the end of last year. We then have three numbers for this current budget book for next school year. We start with the classroom, which is the initial request from classrooms, the program request from the program leaders, which would have been Mr. Salerno's request to Dr. Collins, and then what Dr. Collins presented to us last week is the final column all the way to the right. So if we're looking for a year-over-year comparison, the best is from the last column on the right to the appropriation in 1718, and we can look at what was actually spent in 1617 as well. So that's kind of how that works out. And I'll open up to questions for Mr. Salerno on his program. Ms. Guyen, I believe I saw your hand.
There was the, I'm just wondering what the $887,000 that was originally requested was for that was able to go down to, well, that went down to zero?
That was for teacher replacement devices and also Chromebook devices to be replaced. The Chromebook has a life cycle of approximately three to five years, and as we're seeing, being the third year in the initiative, we may need to start replacing some of the Chromebooks. And also included in there is a projection for rooms in case projection goes down.
And how are we able to take that down to zero?
Well, we're just, basically, we're just kind of holding it off right now in terms of we can get our teacher devices to last another year. And with the Chromebooks, I think we have enough devices in the background that we can support another year without having to replace those immediately.
Okay, thank you.
And some of, is some of the need also offset by our request into CIP for the $188,000 I'm getting for the last year's?
Yes, thank you, Josh. Yes, the non-lapsing and the $188,000, yes.
Further?
Sorry, there's also, I just want to make sure that we're clear on this. There's also the amount from the non-lapsing fund, $145,000, I think it is right, that we'll, we'll be able to purchase some right now for next year. Plus the $188 should get us the Chromebooks that we need for the, for the kids.
Yes, third graders.
Yeah. Mrs. Stroh.
Okay, new question here. I still don't understand what this contracted services is, and I apologize. I emailed over the weekend. It seems like it's a catch-all. It seems like a high number. Can you just explain it to me better, what it really is?
Well, in the world of IT, there's a lot of things that need to be paid for with contracted services, such as your Wi-Fi, such as subscriptions to a company called GoGuardian, which allows our teachers to monitor what's going on in the classroom. We have to pay for the Google G-Suite Management Console of all the devices. There's a very much, a lot of different companies are involved in the protection of the infrastructure and the networking and firewalls, et cetera. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. First, I appreciate the fact you're 5% under your ask from last year. But we also spent $466,000 more than what was asked for last year, and I'm not convinced that we're not going to spend another $466,000 above what you're asking for this year. So what's your confidence level that this is all we need?
I can't give you ever a guarantee because there's always unexpected. Now, you're saying-
I'm asking for a confidence level.
In terms of technology, we spent 460-
You spent $466,000 more than what you-
Right.
-asked for last year. So that, that's quite a lot more. Not that we didn't need it or anything of that nature, but that's why I'm asking, what's your confidence this year?
I think, Mr. Sylvia, our infrastructure is getting stronger, and we're progressing even at a faster rate. I think over the years, you know, we've, we're developing a program that is very, very, it's evolving at a good rate, and I think that we'll continue to be, become more efficient as we move on. But we have to make sure, obviously, we have to keep our eyes and ears open to kind of prevent that from happening again.
So you have no confidence?
I have confidence, Mr. Sylvia. Absolutely.
How much, how much that we will be able to maintain this budget request?
I have full confidence that we'll be able to do it.
I appreciate that.
No problem.
Along Ms. Stroh's question, do we have a itemized breakout of the subscriptions that we need to pay for out of this $550,000?
The answer is yes.
Is it possible?
We have, we have estimates of the various contracts.
Is it possible for us to get a copy of that?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sylvia, can you just clarify your first question about spending more than the ask? Is that from 1617?
Yes, your actuals.
Okay. And so, so are you comparing the actuals from 1617 to the appropriation from 1717?
The actual is $2,461,000 as documented on this.
Right.
The ask was $1,995,000.
And that's from our budget that we passed in 1617 for the 1617 year?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's driving why I'm wondering the confidence, because I'm wondering if during the course of the year, should we anticipate more monies being needed? And so therefore, that's, that's what's driving my question. Because I'm, I'm really hoping that's all you need for this year, for that proposed year.
Mr. Fries.
I would just like to reframe the confidence level. It is pending the $145,000 and the $188,000 from CIP. So, you know, this number is also pending that those monies are a part of, I think, the funding as well. Is that accurate?
There's also $887,000 is being removed from there for teacher devices and so on, things that were scheduled to be replaced. So I can't speak to a confidence level.
Yeah, I would retract that, yeah.
Yeah, we're deferring them.
So is it potentially accurate, and I don't recall exactly what happened in the 1617 school year, but if we had health benefits money come in, that we spent money on technology? Because I seem to remember that we likely did that. I don't know if anyone has any exact recollection of what we did in 1617, or if that's something we can research, because one of the things, aside from, Mr. Sylvia, aside from maintenance that would typically be spent with money that is saved in another category or from health benefits fund for items that were deferred, either in maintenance or technology, are typically the two things that we fund first, which would, why it would be higher than the ask from the 1617 budget year, which I would expect this year will likely spend more than 1.9 million in technology that was appropriated and will likely spend more than 1.9 next year if funds are available somewhere to get some of the deferred items. Mr. Jacobowitz, I don't know if you have anything specific for-
Yes, just to follow up on what Steve was saying. Make sure all the board members fully understand the sources of the funds as of right now. You know, as of today, you had the transfer, or the transfer was made in December to the non-lapsing fund for $150,000 of expenses for technology, which we're going to use to buy Chromebooks, $149,809. There are two pending items in the Town CIP account. One is for this year, which is on the freeze, which is at 70% of the initial $188,000 that was adopted last spring. That money has not been released to us yet. Okay? We are hopeful that will occur, but there's no promises at this point. This is also dependent on the 2018, 2019 Town Council action to be the same, where there'll be another $188,000 provided for it. So we have a one-time benefit for this year for the non-lapsing fund, and we have a contingent item sitting out there that may or may not be made available to us this year, and an uncertainty about where next year will lead us as far as what the Town Council will approve. Okay. So depending on what combination comes to pass will really dictate the answer to the question.
Mrs. Guyen?
Is that $188,000 from CIP included in the total spent in this budget, or that doesn't add in?
No, it's not. Mr. Brandon?
Thank you. Just a quick question on the contracted services. The initial asks and then the department leader asks and then what we're looking at now, are there new subscriptions that we're looking to acquire, or is that all renewals that the prices just went up?
It's all renewals that prices went up, or we're in multi-year contracts with those, so that we'll have to pay for the multi-year contracts.
So there's nothing new that's in there? Gotcha.
We took it all out.
Mrs. Stroh.
I have a couple of questions.
Your mic.
My mic, my mic's lower.
Can you guys turn it off?
First question, can you explain to me the non-lapsing fund? Like, what is it? Where does it come from? I hear it a lot.
I will, I will do my best.
Thanks.
And Lou will correct me if I'm wrong. I got good at this at the end of last year.
This is, I just need that question, then I have other questions.
At the end of last year, a non-lapsing fund was created. General statutes allow Board of Educations to have essentially what is a rainy day fund for operational expenses. You're permitted at the end of every school year to put in up to 1% of your budget into a non-lapsing fund that can be used in the future. The fund never goes away. You don't have to spend it in any certain amount of time, and the town allowed us to create one. What had happened the previous year is we had, we had declared a surplus of $550,000 or so, 515. Or that was two, is that two years ago? Two years ago? I'm sorry. Two years ago, we had declared a surplus of $515,000, and that's when the non-lapsing fund was created for it to be put into there for operational expenses to offset kind of the, a low budget number so that we could use that. So we stopped spending money a couple of months before the end of the school year, took everything, put it in there. Before this non-lapsing fund was created, what would typically happen is at the end of the year, books would be reconciled. If there was any money left over in the board account, which there was every year because contracts, invoices don't always come in right before June 30th, payments don't always get made before June 30th. So we would give back that money to the Town's General Fund. I think it was somewhere in the, in the realm of a quarter million dollars over a couple of years before the non-lapsing fund. It just goes back to the General Fund, you know, it's all the Town's money. With the lapsing fund, we had the surplus, $515,000, put in the non-lapsing fund for one year. We then had a very large insurance, health benefits fund credit, which occurs every October. The credit was over, the credit was over a million dollars because our teachers were very healthy. We have been being quoted for, in our opinion, a few years at a very high rate based on the trend lines for our teachers' health. So again, this year, that's why we expect that number to go down, that's in our current budget years. When that's reconciled, they then give you a check for the money you didn't have to pay in premiums in October. So we were carrying 1.3 million dollars or so in our budget that could have been spent on various things. As a result, again, of a low budget number from the Town Council, part of what along with that is, is we declared a surplus of 1% of our operating budget, which was easier to do this time around because we had an extra 1.3 from health benefits money. We put that $700,000 or so into the non-lapsing fund as well to create 1.2 million dollars, which is the number we talk about frequently around the table. So that was sitting in the non-lapsing fund. So we have our budget of this current school year, our budget of $70,389,000 or so, something like that, with the 1.2 million dollars or so on the non-lapsing account. That money was transferred into our accounts that we can use it for operational things, and the money was spent on, as Dr. Collins put in his budget presentation, it was about $617,000 for teacher salaries. It was $450,000 for special ed. And as I said tonight, about $145,000 is earmarked for Chromebooks. So that equals the 1.2 million dollars. Mr. Jacobowitz?
Just one minor item in your description. The money is not transferred back to the Board of Ed. It's actually, we transfer expenditures to the non-lapsing fund, which then frees up money within our operating budget because of that action. So they don't add to our appropriation. Our appropriation stays at 70,389.
Right. So I got very close, but the general sense is that we have an operational budget, which is the key number, how the town calculates what your increase is, what you report out of what you're spending, of 70.3 million dollars. We have the 1.2 in the non-lapsing fund, which was saved over two years for money that essentially we deferred purchasing things over that time and then put it into this budget to try to do that. So I think that's about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. So just to sort of wrap up my question and come back, based upon the numbers that we know, what type of contingency do we need to have again because of the freeze of funds or not being granted CIP? So I mean, about how much can this number sway one way or the other?
It would not be, should not be viewed as a contingency. It's really the risk of the budget, is that if those events do not occur on the Town side, we will not have $366,000 of resources that we are, you know, counting on at this point.
All right. So thank you. So basically, we've got, I used the wrong word, contingency, I apologize, but I wanted to add 366K to this in case we come into a worst-case scenario and we need to supplement this 1,808 with another 316, so it will actually end up at 2 million and change? Is the budget request?
Well, that's a motion that has to pass by the board members. That's something the group feels comfortable with.
I'm trying to get to, is that the ask of 2 million?
I would say that is, would have to be the fallback position depending on what the Town does.
Correct.
If they do not fund it and we cannot get it through the appropriation, you know, there will be risk associated with that.
But I understand the risk. What I'm trying to get to is what is the actual ask?
I think the easy answer to that is to look at the program request, because that's what Mr. Salerno thought he would require to run the program, and some of that is offset by the amount of money in CIP. But I think that's a good starting point, because that, that has in it everything that he, he would want if he was running an ideal environment.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
And very politely, he's not a-
Right. So we have, I'm hearing we have 316,000 at risk of not being funded by other parties outside of our direct control?
376.
376, okay. So I'll just add 376 to the bottom to get to the number. I really want to understand what Jay is hoping to have at his disposal. Right?
Sounds okay.
Right, but so this is, but remember, this is Dr. Collins' number.
I understand that.
Mr. Salerno's number is, is 2.8 million dollars. It's a million higher.
Yes. So, Mr. Sylvia, back to your question. I have full confidence at 2.8 million dollars. I didn't understand your question. I apologize. I have full confidence at 2.8. The other is unknown.
Me too.
And I don't want to speak for all of our other administrators, but I, my assumption is all of them would agree that the program request-
You'd have full confidence if you had 2.8 million at your disposal.
They'd be fine with it.
Yes, and a Powerball ticket.
That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Do we have further questions for Mr. Salerno? As this is your only category of the evening, and someone deftly organized the program for you to be able to go home right now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Next on our list, we go to art, which is the first tab. For anyone that's tuning in now from home, it's the first green tab. The PDF of the document we are looking at is online at our website, npsct.org. Art is the very first program area, so you should be able to find that. We'll pause for a second for anyone at home to scroll back up the PDF to find it. And we will welcome Mr. Corn to the table to present first for art.
Thank you. So I am going to reference the left-hand side page to give you just a brief overview of the art program. So at the elementary level, the art program is offered to all of our students, kindergarten through fourth grade, on a weekly basis. At the middle school, students participate in a 22-cycle program. And at the high school, we offer a variety of elective courses and AP courses for our diverse student population. Some of the improvements of the art program, we've developed Common Assessments in grades K through 12 that align with the new national and state standards for visual arts, and we are hoping through the plans proposal to offer a new course of ceramics 2 at the high school next year. Some of the needs of our program, the renovation of the art room at Martin Kellogg Middle School, and to fully fund department needs. So now I'm going to direct your attention to the right-hand side page, where I'll go over lines 300 through 800. So for the 2018-19 year, the art department, the art department program is requesting the same amount as the current school year of $27,264. Some of the changes within the line items, line items for 600 has a slight increase in line items for 616. line items for 616 for consumable supplies. And lastly, line items through 700 through 800 are staying the same.
Questions for Mr. Corn? Mr. Sylvia?
All right. I'll start out like I did with Jay. I'm going to presume that the, next to the last column on the right-hand side is the number that you asked for, the 739068.
Mm-hmm.
Does that include the plan that's attached to this section?
Yes, the ceramics 2 is a part of that. And there is no additional supplies needed for that course.
So how did we get to the 737? Dr. Collins?
We were looking at the number of non-salary items, and the directive was to come in at no increase or below. So that's where, that's where we got that. And the salaries are then added to that for the contractual increases. So their directive was to come in at zero or below in each department.
Mr. Sylvia, are you asking what's on the cut list for supplies, media library, and new equipment? That seems, those were the, in my reading, those are the three items that were cut from the initial request to the superintendents?
All right. So we're basically, we're supporting, we want to try to implement the plan request, correct? Of the $1,600, I believe it was?
Right. So is that, is that, that money's in a different program area?
The curriculum, an assessment account comes forward as a plans proposal. There are no supplies or resources needed, only the curriculum writing. So you'll see that later on in the allocation under contracted services and curriculum and assessment.
So that's the, that's the amount of money that teachers would be paid to be writing the curriculum for this new course?
For the advanced ceramics course.
Correct. So that amount, there's a, there's a tab in the book that I'm sure you're familiar with. That's the curriculum assessment. And so one of the line items in there provides, does provide the money for this new ceramics course for teachers to write that curriculum. It's in art programs, which is why the plans proposal is here.
Thank you.
Mr. Tufel?
In the past, I think we're having trouble with one of the kilns.
The kilns.
Has that been replaced or is that in this part of the budget?
We are, I think we're in good shape with the kilns. We should be, I know we're in good shape with Wallace. I know we're in good shape with the high school.
Was that the new equipment that was purchased in 1617? Did we got a kiln?
Yes.
We did. So, Mr. Tufel, if you look in the left column, the actual 1617, I do remember that as well, that almost $25,000 in new equipment.
259, 24974?
Correct. I believe that that was the kiln that we had been talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Droz?
Other new question? I don't, this is to you. The salaries, I assume if I have a question about that, that doesn't come out now because that has nothing to do with your requests?
It certainly can. And I will say, one of the things that I've requested more information on this year is a document to show what builds up the salary. So in this instance, it's very simple because we have 9.35 certificed teachers. That equates to the 710,397 that is there. So it takes, it's, my assumption is it's the same people, and I haven't asked, it's the same people from last year. This incorporates the contractual obligations that we have pursuant to the binding arbitration that was entered into with Teachers Association. Mr. Jacobowitz?
The answer is yes. There's no changes in staff in the art department this year.
So this is an easier one. So I have requested, and hopefully in the next week or so, they'll be able to get it together, is a document that shows how Mr. Jacobowitz gets this number. And so that, that's a conversation for future. But as we go through, you'll see some places where there's a decrease, and we'll ask questions about whether or not that means there's a retirement and things of that nature. But here's a simpler one. Mr. Branda?
Thank you. Can you tell me a little bit about the renovation for the art room? Sorry if you did that last week, but just really quick. Or anybody?
Yeah. Could you kind of speak to it?
That is something that is not in this budget. That would be handled through the public school CIP budget. So all of those types of things do not occur in your, in your operating budget. They incur in the public school CIP or in the, or the larger ones occur in the town capital. The art department renovation would, would be a perfect candidate for the public school CIP funds because it meets the criteria, but it probably wouldn't be funded through the larger, because we go for larger projects with that one. Depending on, I doubt there's going to be any money, unfortunately. It left in the public school CIP to handle it. So this is something that's been on the list to be done for quite a few years. We've done Wallace. We have not done Kellogg, which is in worse shape. And I thought we were going to be able to do it this year, but we may not have the money.
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. The salary number that's provided, does that reflect the gross number that was in the directions to be provided to the staff? Or is this a net reflecting any kind of breakage or things of that nature?
No, the number is gross.
The number is gross, not net.
Right.
So we can anticipate potential breakage?
A little bit.
A little bit. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I thought we just discussed that these are the same, so nine people moving forward. Not in this program, but in other programs?
There's a few of those.
Okay. Any other questions on art? Seeing none, we will move to school counseling services.
Thank you very much.
That is our third blue tab, and Mr. Corn will be presenting that as well.
So if I could direct your attention again to the left-hand side page, which will give you a general overview of the school counseling department and our services. So the mission of the school counseling department is to deliver a comprehensive school counseling program that provides for all students the opportunity to gain understanding of themselves and others. The Newington Comprehensive School Counseling Program is aligned with both state and national frameworks. And state legislation requires school counselors to work with all students in grades K, in grade six through 12 to develop an individual student success plan that concentrates in three domains of both academic, personal, social, and career. And in ours district, we also include the fifth grade as a fifth grade as a part of our middle school. Some of the improvements of our program this past year, I am very excited to introduce the brand-new student success plan for all students in grades nine through 12. And we're continuing, or we're continuing to work on grades nine through 12, the middle school, that was introduced this year. And the school, and for needs of the school counseling department, we continue to appreciate the board's funding to address our, the students' needs so that we could address them. So if I can now direct your attention to the right-hand side page, and I will go through lines 300 through 800. So for the 2018-19 school year, the school counseling department is requesting the same amount of $15,282. In line item 690, there has been a slight increase for new equipment and office supplies. And then in lines, line items 810 and 890, there is a decrease for dues and memberships for the various associations that we are a part of.
I'll start with a tough one. What, can you remind us what the, the new contracted service was that's in operation for this year? In the 599, we went up like $12,000?
That would be our Naviance program. So that is where we house our student success plans. And the number is based off of how many users that we have using the Naviance program. So if we have an increase of our student population, the contracted services go up along with the amount of seniors we have. It's allocated based on how many students we need to use our EDOC systems.
But this certainly wasn't the first year that we...
No.
We used it. So I, was it somewhere else, was it not in counseling before? Or...
Yeah, it's, we've had Naviance for years.
Yeah.
So why does it say $706? For seven, yeah.
If we can get follow-up on that, that'd be great.
Because it's been the same amount for years. I don't know why.
I do also want to point one other thing out that we learned last week and probably heard last year when Mr. Corn was pitching the idea. But I believe the, the printing costs going down $3,200 from 1617 to this current year and down to zero for this year is attributable to the online program of studies that we now have, that we don't have that thick book that every student gets, and we saved about $3,000, which is great. And he gave us a tutorial and curriculum last week, so I wanted to point that out. Mrs. Droz?
Can you tell me what the non-certified positions under school counseling would be?
That would be the secretarial support in the office.
And there are two secretaries?
Yes.
Did you hear that?
I heard your question and didn't catch the answer.
That would, it's the secretarial support in the office.
There are two secretaries for that.
There's two secretaries in the school counseling office.
At the high school level or at all the...
At the high school.
You're, Mr. Sylvia, your mic.
And they support all three or four, three houses?
They support all three houses, but they also support the middle school school counseling departments as well. Thank you.
Dr. Baverman?
How do students make appointments for senior counselor?
So students make appointments through either the house secretary that might be in the office, or counselors also have a sign-up sheet outside their office typically that students can stop in and make appointments. But it's only during non-academic core classes that they can meet. So typically during study hall or lunch periods.
You're telling me we don't use a Google Doc for that?
I love Google, but we do not use it for that yet because of confidential reasons.
I guess that makes sense. Fair enough. But it's... Wow. Mrs. Droz?
Do these numbers for certified staff also count for psychologists or just for school counselors?
Strictly school counselors only. And there are seven counselors at the high school, one of them, which is our academy counselor. And then there's three counselors at each of the two middle schools.
And what's the .9? Sorry. It says 13.9.
That is for, I believe, our career academy counselor.
No, that's for you without your left arm. So point, and point one of Seth is in art or...
I believe it's .5, .05 and two other programs.
And two other programs?
Something, something like that.
And that's one of the reasons why it's confusing to go through program areas because our administrators are split in the certified positions where they oversee, and we try to do it by how much time they spend with that category. So Seth is in charge of art and music, is that right?
Art and school counseling.
Art and school counseling, just school, it used to be music though, didn't it?
Yeah.
Art and school counseling, and so he's split among those areas. And just like when we look, when we talk about math and ELA and those kinds of things, our elementary teachers are split among the five major categories because in elementary school, they teach all the different things. They are point two in each of them. This is the way that the budget is dictated to go in because we have to measure what we're spending on program. One of the reasons why Dr. Collins presented by school, to give a different visual of it, it can get confusing. Further questions on school counseling? Mr. Sylvia?
So I'm noticing under supplies, this is, the supply request, it's separate from the supplies that are under our overall budget request when it has its own line item?
Other than the bulk supplies, like the classroom supplies that are...
So they would get, so if they need index cards or pencils or things like that, all of that would come out of central supply, folders, things like that. So that, what you see in supplies here would be supplies that were specific to the individual program. Things that we don't carry in central supply. So that's why you, you can see a supply budget of zero, and they can still make a year without, without. So it's not that they don't need supplies, they get them through central supply.
Can we have an example of what's in the 690, the other supplies account for this program area? Mr. Jacobowitz?
I'm not exactly sure what the items would be, but they have the college fair every spring where we spend some money for renting tables for the event. You know, the floor matting that goes down, and we put the paper down to prevent the damage to the gym floor. They have the AP testing where they, sometimes they do here, sometimes they go over to American Legion where we have to do the same sort of support that goes into it. So these are all related to the advancement of, you know, the students' opportunities for getting into college.
Mr. Sylvia?
All right. That begs the question. So you got to have some sort of detail to come up with an ask of $1,287, but he only gets $1,208. You know, basically a $79 difference. So somebody, you know, I don't know what cost you $79, paper or whatever. I mean, what, what drives that much of a finite cut on a request?
In this particular case, it would be match a zero increase where there was just a fine-tuning adjustment to the budget request.
So there's no detail to support it? This was just a, oh...
No, the new, the initial request would be there as far as what items comprise the $1,287. I'm not sure what specific adjustment was made. I would have to go back and research that.
Well, I would love to have that detail, only because I'm trying to understand why we're being this picky over $79. I mean, there's got to be something there, paper on the floor.
Yeah, we didn't want, you couldn't go over, you couldn't go over the last year's dollar amount, even by $79. That was, that was the...
So I'm, I'm missing the logic.
To present a lower budget.
I think the logic is if you don't have the money, you can't spend it.
I want to write that down. You don't have the money, you can't spend it. All right. I thank you very much, and sorry for the grill.
Any other questions in school counseling? If not, thank you, Mr. Corn, for your time this evening. I believe you are done. We will now welcome Mrs. Freeman to present wellness, which is our first brown tab. This is another good opportunity for me to remind anyone watching on NCTV that this whole budget binder is available online at npsct.org. We are not going in complete order, but I believe the PDF program areas are in alphabetical order online. This is wellness. It would be towards the end. So we'll give a moment for someone to look for that, and I will wait.
Wellness is definitely not in alphabetical order.
Seems like some of the board members are still flipping through. It's the first brown tab.
Yes.
Please.
Good evening. I'm going to first present to you the wellness program. The goal of our K-12 wellness program is to support student growth and achievement in the five areas of wellness. And those include lifelong fitness, healthy eating, stress management, decision-making, and respect for self and others. Our wellness program also provides multiple opportunities for students to participate in both competitive and non-competitive games. And finally, the ultimate goal of the wellness program is to ensure that students transfer their learning to be healthy and vibrant adults in mind, body, and spirit. A critical improvement to our wellness program for next year is to update the K-12 curriculum in order to meet new state mandates to ensure that we are including both sexual abuse and sexual assault prevention and awareness for our students. We're also looking to evaluate the curriculum next year to ensure that we're including the most current trends and issues that are facing our youth today. Finally, our wellness staff is always seeking to include the widest variety of games and physical activities for our kids to ensure that we are teaching them that physical activity is indeed fun. If you refer to the funds that are being requested on the right-hand side of your page, you'll see that there is a slight reduction from this year's appropriation. The majority of the requests are coming from two areas. One of them is for contracted services, and that is with Life Fitness. That is the company that comes in and services our equipment. That is necessary in order to keep that equipment safe for our students to use. And finally, the other majority of that funding is for supplies. And that happens with... the other majority of that funding is for supplies, and that happens with general wear and tear of the equipment through the school year at each of our schools in the district.
Can you remind us, is the 1617 spend on supplies, did that include a CPR mannequin?
Yes, so it did include the purchase of some mannequins, and the middle school wellness program is very appreciative of those purchases, we did put in requests for more of those mannequins, and I think what made it through was maybe one, we used a mannequin, which I know may sound a little gross, but we wiped them down and we put masks over them, so we ensure obviously that they're clean for the kids, but that CPR first aid unit is in the eighth grade at the middle level.
Great, and I do just want to point out, so this is a good place where you see there was $15,000 more spent in 1617, but that was a one-time occurrence, it's not the continuing cost, so we see those kind of fluctuations from year to year, that there's a one-time cost in one program, that replaces a one-time cost the year previous from another program, you know, to kind of go through that way. Mr. Branda?
Thank you, can you tell me a little bit about the new equipment that was requested and now is at a zero?
Yes, the new equipment that was requested at the program level was for a portable net system, it was cut for budget reasons, it was determined that the program can definitely run without that, the portable net system would allow the wellness teachers to say, go outside and play soccer, and that have the ball go through the cones and maybe go another 50 yards down the field, so it really just makes the time together with the kids more efficient.
Dr. Baverman?
Kristen, what were the new state mandates?
The state mandates are from 2016, these are for grades K through 12, and they are to provide learning for students, to provide them both awareness and prevention in the areas of both sexual abuse and sexual assault, so covered in there would be just an awareness of what those topics mean, what those words mean, for children and also for adolescents, how to advocate for oneself, and especially as we, as children grow into adolescence, how they would support a peer in that type of situation, so some of that is already covered in our curriculum, especially at the elementary levels, in age-appropriate language, when you progress through the middle levels, it's, there probably, we probably do still need to do some work in order to make sure that we're meeting those mandates.
What drove the reduction in periodicals?
Maybe the question that you asked last year, Mr. Schulman, if you remember.
I hope, so is that not something we are using again, or we can just use it for multiple years?
The request did not come, the request did not come in this year, so it's my guess that they purchased those periodicals, and they went to use those for the classroom use as a trial run, and determined that they were probably, were not the most, perhaps the most engaging material for the students.
Okay. Any further questions in the wellness area? Seeing none, we will continue on to science, which is our second blue tab, and that is a program that has a new budget page, so I'll give a second for at least me to replace. Again, that's the second blue tab for science. And so, we are replacing that in our budget books if you haven't done so already. I'm not, I'm not actually seeing a difference, what are we, what should we be looking for, Mr. Jackamotz?
We're seeing the same thing, right?
It's in the salary line for the current year budget, it's just a plus and a minus between the 111 and 112 account.
I see the exact same amounts.
You got 17, 18?
Oh, in 1718?
Yeah.
I see, okay.
Appropriated.
Great.
All right, same bottom line, but it's a matter of how the non-certifieds and the certified salaries were allocated. Thank you.
Is that the same for all program areas that we're replacing tonight, they don't affect this year, just last year's appropriation?
Other than special ed.
Other than special ed, okay. Thank you, so we're all on the same page, so this year's same info, there's a slight adjustment to the salaries for 1718 in appropriations, and next time I'll read the memo before asking questions. Mrs. Freeman, thank you.
Welcome. Science, primary goal of the Newington Science Program is to support students in thinking and working like scientists in the real world. While a high-quality science curriculum ensures that students develop in-depth understanding of science content, the most critical goal is for students to develop skills in planning and carrying out investigations, analyzing and interpreting data, constructing explanation, and designing solutions. In looking forward to next year, program improvements include the continued integration of the next-generation science standards into curriculum revisions and pedagogical practices in the classroom. Newly-aligned curriculum will be fully implemented in grades six through eight next year, and also in physical earth science, biology, and chemistry at Newington High School. Teachers will be developing and implementing updated assessments that also align with the NGSS, which is the next-generation science standards. In order to implement the new curriculum, the program is seeking to update its instructional supplies. Further, we'll also be evaluating our needs for an AP Physics II course, as the high school hopefully welcomes its first students into the Aerospace and Engineering Academy. Finally, we're asking to secure seats for K, for science teachers at CRAK to participate in the Science Curriculum Writing Consortium. In looking at the requested funds on the right-hand page, you can see that those are equal to those appropriated in 201617. The majority of the funds support the replenishment of consumable supplies that are used in the classroom, and also the purchase of the new supplies that, again, will be used to support the implementation of the newly-aligned curriculum. Finally, you will see that there are some funds that are requested, that we do on an annual basis to repair our microscopes and make sure that those are kept in good condition.
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you, a couple of questions, so what needs to be repaired on line 430?
Those are for the microscope, so somebody comes in, and there'll be small repairs that need to be done, but a lot of it is cleaning, and when their microscopes are cleaned on an annual basis, that's what actually prevents any large-scale damage that's done to them.
Thank you, and the other question I have is, I see that from our actuals of 201617, we actually spent $23,000, but the ask was $46,000, but we've only, the superintendent only recommended 33, so are you going to get the supplies you need, or is this just math?
So, we will get, we will get the supplies that we need, I would go back to when Mr. Salerno was here, certainly would the program be able to flourish with having additional supplies, absolutely, but the program will absolutely be able to be implemented with the funds that are being given by the superintendent. Does that answer the question?
Do we have any of the supplies that are on the cut list? Do we have the cut list?
I don't have the cut list.
I know, I was looking towards Lou and Karen.
Right, I'm sitting here going, so 46,000 will allow you to let the program flourish, so what's not growing, or what's not flourishing, or what's going to die?
Chris, I would interject that, one of the things that we ask staff to do, when you look at that initial request column, we have three different categories that staff include, and one is what is absolutely necessary for you to run your program, you cannot do without this, and then the second category is what would help you to move the program forward if you could, and the third category is what would actually enhance your program, so we use those codes when we have to make cuts, so when you ask a question like this, typically what happens is, to get to the superintendent's number, we had to cut all the twos and threes, so the only thing included are the things that we absolutely need to move the, to maintain the program, but the things that get cut are the things that would have been nice to have, or might have been something I'd try out in a new station with kids, but I'm not going to be able to do that this year.
And then, from time to time, if there are program areas that see less of a need that they expected, and there's some money, that those are some of the things that are first put in, they're deferred items that would be possible to have for the next year potentially, then those are some of the things that would be paid for, from health benefits money, from breakage during the year, all of those types of things, so that's, they go back to the last budget request to look at those items.
My earlier question, though, did we not ask for the departments to give us gross numbers, which in my mind, saying that's a number three, or number one, whatever your categories are, I mean, I'm questioning now, is the 33,000 a number one, a number two, or number three?
Number one.
It's the minimum of what you need.
The 47,000 would be all of them, yes.
Correct, so the 33,222, that is Dr. Collins approving and appropriating the money that the program needs in order to be implemented, as written in the curriculum.
So, in the manner that it was submitted, this is the minimum amount of money that is needed to keep the program?
Maintain the program.
And the 46 is what, number two? Number one?
It would be the one, two, and three, that would be all of the requests together.
So, this is the number one, the 46,000?
The 47,000.
Right, those include those things that we called enhancements, that's where I talked about really making that program flourish, so we can try out new activities, Ms. Kraus brought up, bringing up a new station that we want to try with kids, that costs money in order to have the supplies, in order to try those practices.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, I appreciate it.
Mr. Branda?
Thank you, the tickets at CRAK, is that a part of the curriculum writing budget that we're going to talk about later, is that, or is that in this one?
It's not included in here, it will be in curriculum writing, or it may actually be in professional learning, I believe, so Mr. Freezy will probably present that.
Okay.
CRAK has a consortium, right, so the science teachers go there, and they actually learn about the new standards while writing the curriculum from science teachers in the area, and they write assessments, it's actually a very powerful experience for the teachers, and then they're part of writing that curriculum as well.
So, those monies that Mr. Branda asked about are not in this request?
That is correct.
They'll be in curriculum?
They'll be in curriculum and assessment, because it's curriculum writing that they will be working on with CRAK, they'll have those conversations and that research, and then writing curriculum, so we'll pay CRAK for that curriculum writing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Branda?
Just to follow up to that, I know it's in a different budget or line item, but the need for doing that, how does it impact this budget or the program, like, let's say it didn't get through in the curriculum budget, what impact does that have on the actual program itself?
The impact that it would have on the, on the program would actually be probably much more pedagogical in terms of how well the teachers are able to implement the new curriculum, the next-generation science standards are very complex, especially compared to the old science framework, so that experience, as I described it, is not just about writing a curriculum, but it's really understanding what those standards look like for teaching and learning in the classroom, so the impact really comes in what students are learning, because it directly impacts the pedagogical approach that the kids can, I'm sorry, that the teachers can take.
So, that's a one-time thing? In theory, in theory, yeah.
That is correct, so it's, and it's phased in, so we're sending some teachers this year at certain grade levels, and then next year will be other teachers, and then at the following year will be at a different grade level, so it's not all teachers at the same time.
Further questions for Mrs. Freeman on science? Seeing none, thank you for your time this evening, Miss Freeman. We will now invite up to the table Mrs. Davis to present STEM, which is our second yellow tab, conveniently right next to science, so just flip one page.
Good morning, good evening, everyone, gosh, I said good morning, wishful thinking. So, in focusing on the left-hand page, goals of this program really is to expand the number of students who ultimately pursue advanced degrees and careers in the STEM field, also to increase the participation of females and minorities in those fields as well, and really also to increase STEM literacy for all students, including those who do not pursue STEM-related careers or additional studies, it's really important, vital actually, to increase students' scientific and technological understanding in order to stay competitive in our 21st century, you know, growth and how things are changing in our economy. You'll see down in the description of our present program, all kids in middle school, five through eight, participate in a STEM exploratory curricula that is based on a cycle, we also have at the middle level our STEM academies in seventh and eighth grade, for those that are accepted into the lottery process, and we're really hoping to be able to fund at least one teacher in the aerospace, under the STEM budget, for the Aerospace and Engineering Program at the high school, which brings us down to our program improvements, again, is really to look at upgrading our flight simulator maintenance, that you'll see reflected in our budget, and then also, this year, we've had some, some participation in our STEM challenges, where students are able to compete on a national level, and if I can direct your attention over to the right-hand page, you'll see that the ask for this year in our supplies line is $26,365 for consumables, and then down below are the dues and the memberships to continue on with those competitions, which are our invention convention and our cyber, what is it called? Yes, cyber patriots, I was going to say cybersecurity, and that's it, do you guys have any questions?
Mr. Branda?
Thank you, you mentioned working on recruiting females and minorities for the program, can you talk a little bit about that process and how you go about doing that?
So, you know, one of the things that we do in terms, well, one obviously is our exploratory program, and that is for students in five through eight, so they have, they have exposure, in fifth grade, they have more of an engineering and building with bridges and structures in that level, in sixth and seventh grade, they do more of programming, we use the Lego Mindstorm kits, that students get some more experience with coding and trial and error, and then also, again, designing, creating different vehicles per se, to learn about forces in motion, and, you know, using different materials and how that could impact, you know, and certain ways in which things move, and then in eighth grade, they're given more of open challenges, where they get to pick something that they'd like to expand upon, so again, making sure you hit every student, and then also, in our biomedical and aerospace academy, which I will say there has been an increase in female participation, where when they first opened up, both academies were more predominantly, the aerospace academy was, had more of male attendance, and then the biomedical academy actually had more of a female attendance, so they've both really evened out this current year, and, you know, by bringing in, we have folks from, from some of our industry partners, like PCX, where they bring in engineers who are minorities and females to really speak to the kids, so, you know, again, we do a good job with that exposure to our kids, and then also bringing in folks that, you know, it's, it's just not a group of older white gentlemen, so.
You're welcome.
The order is Mr. Sylvia, Mrs. Strohs, Mrs. Guy, and that's the way I saw it.
Thank you, okay, so I'm of a real big interest because of my, the noise that went around STEM.
What noise was that? I'm just kidding.
I understand, I see in the numbers that we're only increasing staff by one, but we're asking for two.
That's correct, so, so if, you'll see in, when I present the CTE or workforce So, so if you'll see in when I present the CTE or workforce development, you'll see one in that. So what we're hoping this year is that I can find someone, not only with a biomedical academy, not only someone with a biology certification, but I'm hoping to find someone with a 103 certification, which is a health science occupations, and that kind of falls on the CTE technical side. And then with the aerospace and engineering program, I, we're hoping to find someone that has either a physics or a physical science certification. And that's why.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is unacceptable to me. I would, you know, this is STEM. I want to be able to categorically say, we got our two STEM teachers. So there's a motion here. I apologize. So because of the perception of the town and such, right? I understand what you're trying to achieve.
Sure.
And I, I'm not questioning that. All right? What I question is, is the presentation itself. So if indeed we're hiring two, I want, and it says it here, and the program needs that we need two, I want, I want two.
Yeah, I understand. We had the same discussion this morning, and, and the way they explained it to me is that if we, I want to say purchase, if we hire one through CTE, Kim can then use Perkins' grant funding to, for the equipment. I said the exact same thing this morning. It's gonna, it looks funny because where's the other one? There's one here and there's, why, why aren't they both carried in STEM? And if they carry them in STEM, Kim won't be able to use the grant funding to buy some of the materials. So that's really the only reason. I'd rather see them here as well, but we would have to then not, we wouldn't be able to use the grant funding. That's the only reason.
I don't think that, I, thank you for sharing. I do appreciate it. But that's going to be lost in the messaging. We have been screaming for two stems. I'd love to see the number say two stems.
But if the kids are going to the school or to the classes, does it, like, does it matter? If, that's what the town wants, right? They're, they're not looking for the optics of where the teacher is in the budget. They want to know that the kids are getting the program that we constructed. So isn't that the greater concern?
Michael, I understand. At our level, and we're this deep into this, we understand that. And I can agree with that, except the messaging. We have said we need two stems.
Mrs. Dros, you are next.
Well, I had, and my question goes along with that, and I had asked, I think, you when you were this weekend, and our emails back and forth about the budget.
I was at the grocery store.
He was at the grocery store. He was delightful to email me back. I don't understand, I don't see any added staff in this. So the way I read this is that this year we had 7.1 staff members, and next year we are out.
Mr. Jacobowitz, where are the two positions in the budget?
Okay, the two additional positions have already been authorized by the Board of Education last year. So there's no need to authorize an FTE for it.
Just funding.
But they were authorized with zero funding last year. So the numbers stay consistent from one year to the next, and we have approximately $90,000 per staff member to hire those two positions, one in STEM and one in career tech workforce development. You know, explain that in detail in the note that I handed out as part of the cover package for today's budget presentation. So you can refer to the note again.
So what we were handed today, not what we were handed the other day?
Yes. It was a summary, a little narrative that I did to explain that.
So there's a memo summary and to reiterate. So the positions, because they were, they were approved positions, they go into this FTE count at the top, so the very top, the certified position 7.1 for last year. It looks like we increased by one, but we didn't. There wasn't a seventh body. There was a seventh position created with $0 attached to it because the position was, which is why it's not always easy to go from certified positions to certified salaries. So the positions already exist in the numbers, which is why we don't see an increase of two anywhere. But over the two programs, workforce development and STEM, there is $90,000 in STEM and $90,000 in workforce development in the 111 accounts. That's an increase. And if you look here, it goes up, up by just over $100,000. So you have the contractual raises for the certified staff along with the $90,000 to potentially hire another STEM teacher. So if that proposal does not pass, and we take it out of our budget before passing on town council or after the town council gives it to us, we would take away $90,000 from STEM, take away $90,000 from workforce development, the numbers wouldn't change. The 7.1 here, and it's, it's a different number in workforce, but those numbers themselves wouldn't change. That's what they are explaining to us. Mr. Sylvia?
Fully understand the logic. No question. I look on the left-hand side, what does it tell me at the bottom of the page? What are our needs? Two STEM teachers.
Right, you do need the teachers.
I see funding for one.
In one in, in one in another program area so we can take advantage of a grant.
No, that doesn't say it. It says this program needs two STEM teachers on the left-hand side. And all I'm saying is, keep it simple.
It also says that in the workforce development.
Yeah, it does.
So it does. I'm just telling you.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not sure this is where the op, the town is getting their optics from our very detailed budget book. They're getting it from whether or not the program is running, but it's, that's aside from the topic.
So I'm going to be here next year seeing another STEM teacher being added. Because why? You know, so either the needs are, we need one STEM teacher, and you were going to supplement the STEM program with another workforce career technical?
No, there are two people.
Yeah, these are academy teachers, and I know we're using the term STEM. That's where they happen to fall in the budgetary allocation for, for one of them at least. But really, we're talking about opening up the academies at the high school and continuing that whole program. And under the academies fall STEM teachers, as well as someone in a biomedical academy, which we would hope has a health science background in addition to the biology background that's necessary. In doing that, we're able to offer more programs to students in the academy program. If someone comes to us without that health science background, or we don't push for that and recruit for that, then we're not going to be able to offer the courses that we hope. So really, what we're talking about are two academy teachers. And really, if this were rewritten, it would be one STEM teacher and one under workforce development. I think, I think that is the kind of optic that we're looking for is to open the academy program, we need two academy teachers at the high school.
It is possible that.
And I don't disagree with that. That's why I'm hollering on two.
Right.
Right? So if this is modified, because Lou gave us the new numbers, right? If this is modified to say, one STEM teacher is the need, and the second STEM teacher will be from the other category?
There's two academy teachers. It is possible, there's two academy teachers we need. It is possible because the biomedical teacher will need to have, in order for us to issue the CMA, CMA?
Yeah, it's a white medical.
Medical, yeah.
Certified medical assistant, yeah.
Right. They may need to have, it is possible, they may need to have a CTE endorsement. So it depends on the person we find. So if they happen to have that endorsement, then it is, it can only be in the CTE budget because Perkins won't pay for STEM teachers, believe it or not.
I have no argument with that, Dr. Collins.
Okay.
I just want to have a clear documentation that the need is one.
Need is two.
The document says two.
Yes.
The budget says one.
One here, and there's one in the other budget.
I understand what you're saying on the left-hand page, on the narrative. It says two. I, I understand. You could put one academy teacher under there, and then one academy teacher in the workforce. Is that what you're saying?
When I win the lottery ticket, and I'm no longer here, I want my replacement to be able to clearly look and see that this is what we did and what we've discussed, and not be in a position where Mr. Branda, Mrs. Dros is, is going, what's going on here?
The point is noted.
And I do support that, and I appreciate the explanation and why you've taken the approach.
Yep.
Your, your, your point is noted, Mr. Sylvia. Mrs. Dros, did you get your question out? Or did you? Go for it. No, no, no. You were, you were, you were in line before.
Okay. So my next question is, the 26,365 for supplies?
Mm-hmm.
Is that only for the middle school academies, or is that for all STEM, like the STEM classes and everything else?
It's, it's for all of the STEM classes, all the STEM exploratory, and also the, the middle school academies, the biomedical and the aerospace. So that includes any of the, you know, the 3D printer supplies, those spools, some of the replacement of the Mindstorm kits, or the, we use Connex bridges, any of those replacement pieces, gauze, batteries, wood, anything, again, anything consumable because it's all project-based and hands-on.
What about supplies for the potential opening of the high school academies?
So some of those were purchased under the CIP, is that, or the FFNA? FFNA, thank you.
And what is that?
From the project. Yeah.
Can someone explain that? So through, from the building project? Your mic's not on?
From the project, there's a certain amount that is, that was listed for FFNA, pictures, furniture, that we were able to, what we were able to identify, such as the flight simulator, furniture, those types of things. So all of that for the high school program has already been purchased and is sitting, the, what do you call those, the exam tables? I mean, all of that, all that is considered FFNA. So all of that has been purchased. We even purchased the, I want to say the books are even purchased for the high school program. Right. We thought we were going to open it. So we have, we have the materials. The only thing we're missing is the material.
Yep.
So we have everything. It was funded not through our operational budget. It was funded through the building project, but it was part of the original specs that was approved through CIP. So there was money set aside for that as part of the overall request to do the project.
Yeah, and I also, that's right. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. The other thing I want to be clear is just because we're going to open doesn't mean that every class is going to run because there is a sequence to some of the classes where you need a prerequisite. So, so, yeah, I mean, we're, again, we're, we can only run a few classes. So it's not going to be to start. That's all right.
Mrs. Dros, did you have anything further?
And they're kind of one question. Is it my understanding it's 50 students in the, each academy in the middle school? How many in the high school?
So it's elective base. So, you know, right now, we have anywhere from 600 to 800 students that are taking CTE courses. I'm sorry, workforce development, career technical education. So in our academy programs, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So we have, you know, our culinary academy, we have our business and finance academy, and then we have our IT and digital innovations academy. So some kids are self-identified as academy students that want to take a, you know, a sequence of courses or go through the pathway. And we have about, I don't know, 100 and something students that, that are not only getting the academic side, but they're also participating in the career academy success program. So, but then we have, because these are all elective classes, as I mentioned, we have anywhere from 600 to 800 kids that are taking, you know, a course here and there in each of the classes.
And with, with two teachers coming into the high school, specific for STEM, teaching five periods a day, I imagine 10 sections total, somewhere around 150 to 250 kids in that range, depending on what type of class it is, how many kids can actually go into each of them, and then, you know, that, that, I think answers your question.
I only ask because at one point someone said that was 350 requests.
I think there were that many, there were that many requests last year for the courses. Not all of them, of course, would have gotten into those courses.
There were 350 requests.
It was 200 slots that were open for those classes.
That's right.
Because we would want to keep the classes, considering most of these classes are going to be very hands-on and involved and project-based. You'd have approximately 20 students over the five periods that it would be offered. So it would be approximately 200 students who would be within the, divided between aerospace and medical sciences.
But we heard 350.
Those are requests.
Those are the requests. That's students who've requested. We don't, every student doesn't get all of their requests, so they might make eight requests to fill six periods or 12.
But we communicated to the community that 350 students were waiting to have these two STEM teachers.
I think we said that there were 350 requests by students for these courses, and so we could give none of those requests an honor.
So we could only honor 200 of the 350 requests that were made last year? So the.
No, we couldn't honor those because those programs did not have a teacher. Oh, if we did, yes, that's correct. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So if we had the two teachers last year, we would have been able to accommodate 200 of the 350 number that was bantered out.
That's correct.
That is correct.
That wasn't the message that we got out.
It was exactly what was stated in those meetings.
Well, I, I'm having a lot of difficulty here because I'm hearing different sets of numbers, and all of a sudden the qualifications come out, and I appreciate it.
It has been consistent. There were 350 requests from students to take those courses.
Correct.
There are not 350 seats in classes taught by two teachers over one day.
So.
That was what was, that was what was communicated last year.
So I'm, I'm arguing here, and I, I apologize. So if we have 350 students.
It might not be 350 students.
Requesting to take STEM classes.
One requested student.
Is our real need not 200, but not two STEM teachers, but three or four STEM teachers?
We don't have the space for that.
We don't have the space. I don't buy that.
So I would just interject that on most courses that are elective courses, as Mrs. Davis indicated, these are electives, we do have 350 to 400 requests. Because if a student can only take seven classes in a day, because they do, Josh, need lunch now, it would mean that, it would mean that no student could get all of their requests. That would be impossible. We would need to extend the day and add probably three periods to our day and run an 11-period day. So in general, elective courses have many more requests than we can fulfill.
That's, that's correct. Yeah, absolutely. Because as Pamela said, when they actually go to run the schedules, it might not fit in what, just because a student wants it, doesn't mean that's what he or she needs.
So how do I win the lottery?
Needs is going to get.
If you have a secret, tell us, we'll all go buy tickets.
There is no lottery for electives. It's really just on how your availability in your schedule. It also goes by preference. So they start with seniors first, and then juniors and sophomores, and then down the line. So there's also a bit of a seniority when running those class schedules.
All right. So in summation, two STEM teachers split between two accounts.
Academy teacher, yes.
Will service 200 students, give or take a nickel.
That is the average number of students that any high school teacher would have within the course of one day. There are some teachers who have 25, but then another class of 20.
Hundred per teacher.
A hundred students per teacher.
It also depends on if the class is a year-long or a semester-based. So a lot of our, our CTE or workforce development classes or academy classes, sorry, I know there's a lot of names here, but they generally run a semester-based class. I will say the aerospace program, those classes are going to be a year-long class. And again, with one individual, there's only a certain amount of preps or classes that a teacher can teach within the course of a day. So there's a little bit of a restriction there as well. So again, it all depends on enrollment, requests and enrollment. If that makes sense.
Thank you.
It's complicated.
Mrs. Dros, it stemmed from your question. Did you have anything else? Okay. The, the new queue is Mrs. Guyon, then Dr. Braverman, then Mr. Branda.
You all are in luck because my question has been answered, so I'll pass.
Dr. Braverman.
Kim, the math requirements to minimize sections, that's what you put in the program needs? What does that mean?
So Brian Holmes, who, we were very fortunate to have someone who is dual-certified in both science and math. He, you know, we've talked a lot about, a lot of things in terms of the math. This past year, we put in a requirement that students would actually need accelerate, to be recommended for accelerated math, so that there is a minimal amount of math sections that students are taking within the academy because there's only one of him, and there could be a potential of three, well, three, maybe four, if you throw in grade-level math sections of that. At one point, there was a teacher who was not associated with the academy, but came in and taught a section. So those academy students that were in a grade-level math or accelerated math didn't necessarily have the integration of some of the aerospace and engineering topics integrated within that. Does that make sense? So, go ahead.
In the, in the biomedical academy, though, they don't, they do it differently?
They do do it differently because. They do do it differently, because there is Melody Lee, who is able to, she just focuses on math, and that's all she does. And she, what they did in, in the biomedical academy, they actually, for the eighth graders, they have an applied math course that they offered for students, so that all kids going through that could have, could apply some of those math concepts. It didn't matter what, you know, grade level that you were on. So it's a little bit different in the biomedical academy. It just seems to work.
What started to happen at the aerospace academy is the math levels was getting so wide. I may have to buy some more microphone. Okay, I know, I know. There we go. So the, what was happening was the math was becoming so diverse, the kids actually were starting to leave the academy for math, which, to me, defeats the entire purpose. So, we want them to stay in there, especially for the math and science. So we really need to tighten that up, and, and it's a philosophical thing, I know. However, we don't want to dilute the strength of the, of the academy either.
But at Martin Kellogg, they leave, I might not be talking about the same thing then, but in Martin Kellogg, it's, that's because they have the applied math, it's okay for them to leave the academy for their math class?
So, we're not saying that it's okay. However, and again, and every year, it depends. It depends on the students that are applying to the academy. So one year, you might get students that, you know, might have all, you know, Algebra I. You might have a large group of students that, you know, are at accelerated, and a few that are at grade-level math, that maybe they're able to make the jump or see where they fit. We've done that as well. We're not saying it's a, you know, a perfect science, and we kind of take it by year, year by year. You know, we have talked about minimizing the math at biomedical, where they, you know, we might have to, you know, we recommended or talked about recommending that they have at least an accelerated. And Jen, as the program leader, is not ready to make that leap yet. She feels that, you know, they're able to make do, and if they go out for, you know, if it's a small amount of kids and they go out, they still get that applied math in the eighth-grade curriculum. So, we, it's always a constant discussion. I'll just say that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to learn about both, thank you.
Dr. Braverman, are you all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Branda, then Mrs. Dros.
Thank you. I have three, I think, quick questions, though. The first would be, I'll steal Mr. Sylvia's type of questioning. Your confidence that you can hire the teacher that you can split between the two, and then what happens, I guess, if that doesn't happen?
Can you clarify split between the two?
So, when you were, yeah, the workforce development, what happens if you don't find the teacher with the dual certifications?
Um...
Or what is your confidence that you will? Is that...
Find, find someone? Yeah.
We're highly confident. We currently employ two people with those certifications.
Okay. Great. How, assuming that this goes through, if it does, how does this impact the kids from the middle school that didn't get the classes this year that they thought that they were going to get? Because you mentioned the seniority of getting certain classes at the high school, so how does that impact them?
Well, we've had some discussion around that, and, and we're working on that. I can't tell you if I have a solution. You know, we've discussed one of the, you know, the perks of, of identifying yourself as an academy student, that you would have access to those classes, because you need a certain amount of courses, right, or credits, so that you can go out and then get an internship. That's the point of identifying yourself as an academy student. So we've had some discussion. I'm not sure if we've worked out all the kinks, but, you know, as we continue to evolve, I'm just hoping that, you know, those will be worked out.
I'm just, I just think it would be, we need to consider the students who have gone through two years of the middle school programming.
I agree 100% with you. I just cannot guarantee, that's right, yeah, because now we have other kids coming, yeah.
Just the last question, can you just clarify? We were talking about the 200 and the 350. There was a question of whether or not we had the room or the space for that many. Can you just clarify whether or not we would have room? I, I don't think that we do. It sounded like we don't, but just to clarify, do we have the room to have more students in the program? Yeah, physical space.
So there was a, Kim clarified after I did my calculation, because more of the medical science courses are going to be semester courses, and aerospace will more be full year, correct, Kim? Well, actually, I recalculated. We can get between 280 to 300 students in the program, because then it would be a semester and a semester. When we have the program in full swing and they're more full year, that may end up decreasing a little bit, but again, because teachers can only teach five of eight periods, if we did utilize either with decreasing enrollment, retool some of the staff we have who are certified, we could then maximize the use of the facility for eight periods a day versus five.
So, but I guess the other question, though, is that, is there room in the biomedical side of it to have two classes going on at the same time? Or is that, is that true of the aerospace side?
Not for the aerospace side, not at the same time. It's just, in the biomedical side, there's a genomics lab, and then there's more of the CMA, where, you know, there's exam tables set up, and it's more, more like an office setting. So you could have dual classes running there, not the same class, but just at the same time. So, yeah, I can potentially see two individuals, especially if there are a high number of students that are looking to get their, their certified medical assistant certification, which is ultimately the goal of that program.
Okay. Mrs. Dros.
You're going to be proud of me, Mr. Scholman. I think I'm finally understanding how this budget works. So you said that Mr. Holmes teaches math for the biomedical, I mean, for the aerospace.
Aerospace and science.
Right. So in the budget, like this number, does it decrease because he's, is some of it in the math budget?
Is he, is he wholly in STEM because it's the STEM academy?
He's just STEM, and I don't, I don't think it's allocated just because he's teaching the math, just because he's teaching math classes. When he first started, he was teaching everything, actually. And then this, this, last year, Holly Garreville came on as the, she teaches seventh and eighth grade science, and they split the aerospace courses. Yeah.
STEM is a, that's a very good question.
Yeah, that is a good question.
Any other questions on STEM? Seeing none, we will move on to workforce development, which is the first blue tab in our binders. And again, for anyone who's just tuning in now, to our discussion of the budget, the budget book that we are looking through is up online on our website, npsct.org. It's a PDF, so you can scroll through. We are not going in order of the pages as they appear online, so you may need to scroll through, and we apologize for that. But we are now on workforce development, which is code 1006. Mrs. Davis.
So, if I can direct your attention to the left-hand page, goals of this program really focus on career exploration. We do this in a variety of ways, obviously through our content, providing students an authentic learning experiences, which we've, we do a really great job of doing that. Obviously, in culinary, kids are doing catering for our Chamber of Commerce, for our district meetings, and also for some of our sports teams as well. We also offer our accounting students, they get audited by certified accountants. They go through a whole rigorous audit with them. We, you know, we partner with community businesses and universities. We offer a structured and sequenced work-based learning program for all of our ninth through 12th grade students. And we also offer opportunities to receive industry certification, industry-based certifications, such as our Microsoft Office Specialist Certification, and hopefully with our CMA. If I can direct you your attention over to the right-hand page, you'll notice the ask, we've asked for two things, which was our supplies, which is really consumables, that basically goes right to our culinary program to pay for their food, and some of their non-perishable items, like dishwashing soap and utensils and Saran Wrap, things like that. And there was an ask for $12,000, and that was to support our DECA program. However, there was a reduction in, in the superintendent's proposed budget, which leaves us at a grand total of $13,500.
Mr. Branda, quick fingers.
Does that mean that DECA will not be funded, or is that money somewhere else?
That means it won't be funded currently.
Any explanation as to why?
Yeah, well, they were instructed into, to bring in a zero-based budget. So what we ended up doing last year, I don't know if we used health benefits money, or how, we paid for partial of it, and the kids had to pay for the rest. And, you know, I'd love to pay for it all. Had I, had I was able to get that in there last year, and she could have brought in a 0% budget with it in there, but it was taken out last year, so unfortunately...
And so that doesn't mean the program ends?
No, 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 the program is still running.
Those are travel costs for competition.
Yes.
So the students involved in it pay for it themselves?
Yeah, no, we, last year was kind of, we weren't really sure, because who knew we were going to have winners at the, to get there? We were very fortunate, and we did. So, we did find a way to fund part of it. So this is a, I don't want to say a what-if, but I suspect we're going to have another good year, and we'll have to figure out how we're going to pay for them to get there this year as well. But, yeah, the program is still running.
Yeah, I will say, so far, six students have made it to the international competition.
For this year?
Yeah.
Great. Wow. Well, it's good.
It's incredibly impressive. Mrs. Dros?
I'm going to ask an obvious question. I'm supposed to see a STEM teacher in here, and I don't. Or am I just not understanding it, that it was there, and because we didn't hire, but I see an increase? Help me out.
The increase in salary certainly corresponds to a STEM teacher in salary. This position was approved the year prior to the one last year.
2016?
It's there, it's just not funded.
The bio, the plan was to open biomed before aerospace at the high school, because that's how it opened at the middle school level, so those kids were moving into the high school earlier. So the plan's proposal for one STEM teacher was approved, must have been in the 15, 16 year. So if we go back to our budget books from a couple of years ago, it will show the one additional position that's just been in there and unfunded for two years now.
We also got a position too.
And then we had a, we had a one-year delay in the actual, of the construction, too.
Yeah.
Right?
It was actually a halftime position, but he couldn't do halftime, so he left and he went to Weatherfield.
That was in last year's.
Uh, two years ago.
The year, in 1617, so it would show an actual decrease of .5. That was one of the layoffs, when we laid off two administrators as well, two years ago.
That's right, it was part of a reduction for us, yeah.
Just we're on the same page. So, originally, high school STEM academy was to, was supposed to be completed, so that bio could, biomed would have started.
Yep, they started first in the middle school.
There was a construction delay, if I'm remembering right, so it was, wound up not being, not even being able to be completed then.
That's actually correct.
Was completed the next year, which is why we thought we would get two at the same time.
That's right.
And that's why you don't see the one here.
And if, if I could just clarify, I know you, you spoke about a reduction of .5, but then we weren't able to fill that .5, so it was reduced the program all the way down to 1.0. And then this was also approved at the same time, so it just flatlined at 8.1.
Okay.
And then also, because one of the directives we had was if, if money was available during the year, and we were able to find somebody and open the program, the position is already approved. We just didn't have the funding.
Mr. Sylvia.
Thank you. So if I'm understanding the conversation correctly, we funded a STEM teacher last year?
No, we didn't.
Approved.
The position was approved with no funding.
But we meant...
Two years ago, the position was approved with no funding.
But by our records and the manner of which monies were spent, we were able to reallocate $79,000 last year, and $86,000 the year before on the money asked. So we had sufficient monies to have the STEM teacher for the position that we authorized.
No one knows what you're referring to right now?
No, my question is, is that if we, if we funded it last year, and we got the authorization for it, and as a result, we didn't have the teacher, so we had excess monies of last year, $79,000 in this account, and $86,000 on the year before, and the year before that, $133,000 excess that were reallocated to other accounts as a result. So, in my mind, I'm sitting here going, we had the money for the STEM teacher, but we didn't hire a STEM teacher, or am, what am I missing? I mean, we took money out of the account, they had the money, but we didn't purposely hire the STEM teacher for biomedical, or I, I'm not understanding why, what, I'm totally lost. Because we had the money, it got reallocated to different accounts, and we all approved it, but the trending here is telling me that, I don't, as Ms. Dros brought up, I don't see an extra staff. We've had the staff, but we didn't hire. Or, what am I missing?
Mr. Jacobowitz.
Okay. I'm not exactly certain of where the numbers and the magnitude that's here, but this appears to be strictly a timing issue of when things happen. Like, right now, if we are to, you know, make a commitment to start the STEM academy for next year at the high school, it needs to be in the program request, and it needs to be integrated into the schedule. So all of that will be finalized by April, when your budget is adopted.
All right, Lou, so I've got to stop you, please. I have to interrupt. The monies have been available since 2014. So...
No, that's, right.
This is from the CAFR, the CAFR. We've had the monies available, so it's not a timing issue, in my opinion. It's a matter of a purposeful decision that we elected, we authorized the position, there was a decision not to hire the STEM teacher.
That decision comes from our Board of Education at budget time, when we cut the position out of our budget, and tell Dr. Collins, we're laying off staff members, don't hire anyone else.
All right. So you cut it out of the, you cut it out of the budget? He still has excess funds that he reallocated to other accounts.
And if you're asking for them to recreate every budget transfer from the last three years, then that's your request.
No, I'm not asking that. I'm just looking at the end of the year, Josh. I'm looking at the end of the year. We've, even though...
And for you to get an answer to your question, they would have to redo every single transaction that took place in a budget year to find why there was money transferred from one program area to another one. Maybe you can go back and re-watch all of our board meetings from the budget transfers and see if we asked questions to Mr. Jacobowitz about why the money was transferred from one area to the other. My guess is a lot of the times, as we freeze spending, and I'll finish, and I'll finish, if you'd let me finish.
I'm sorry.
And my assumption is that at times, we stop spending in certain areas and don't buy consumables until the end of the year, to figure out if we have overages in areas that we have to pay the bills, such as special education, which has been happening, to my recollection, for several years. So it may be that we had money allocated originally, Dr. Collins or his administration told staff that we can't purchase things we thought we were going to be able to get, because we have to pay the bill to someone else, either for magnet school overages, for special education overages, there might have been a maintenance problem that required more money going in there, or any number of reasons. But without recreating every transaction, we can't tell what, what happened from program area to program area. We can tell exactly what was budgeted for at the beginning of the year and what was spent at the end of the year, but we have to look back to our meetings from three years ago to see why we transferred money from one program to the other.
Respectfully, I can accept that explanation. However, I get an explanation that it's timing? No, I can't accept that because of the way the numbers are here. I can accept that Dr. Collins makes a decision and informs the staff accordingly, but the end-of-the-year numbers, for me to hear that we didn't hire STEM teachers, and we've had the monies in this account for biomedical, for the types of certifications that we're seeking, I'm truly at a quandary of why we made, we, our team made a decision to not go after the necessary biomedical individual that we, we funded.
You, you need to turn the blame inward, then, because we made the decision each of the last three budget years now...
No, we didn't make the decision.
...to not fund our STEM positions. And as soon as we do not fund them through the budget, the classes do not get run.
That was in the STEM section, Josh.
When, I don't know why you're hung up on the workforce development versus STEM categorization. We're talking about the same two positions. We've made the decision year after year not to fund those positions and told our administration that when we're laying off people, we are not hiring new people for new programs. Those are decisions we've made around this table. So it is our fault that that has happened. At any time, we could have said, we'll cut $70,000 or $90,000 out of any other program just to hire a teacher. We could have laid off a fifth teacher last year to bring in a STEM teacher or a sixth teacher to bring in two. We made the decision that it wasn't appropriate to do so as a body. That's the answer. If there is a positive amount of money that we didn't expect in an account because of any one of a number of life events or because we didn't need to buy something we thought we were going to buy and budgeted for in the middle of the year, we can't then go out in March and hire a STEM teacher. It doesn't, that's what I believe what Mr. Jacobowitz meant in terms of timing, that the timing doesn't work out by the time we see that there might be money to transfer at the end of the year because it's the end of the year already.
Just to jump in on one other point on this, having everybody have the same frame of reference understanding of making that decision, let's say it's now, we're doing it for this year, that final decision for hiring a STEM teacher will happen sometime between today and the board adoption. This result that Steve is talking about is based on the CAFR 20 months after the fact. So you're looking at basically decisions of two years ago and our ability to be perfect on the clairvoyance of any possibility that might happen that's here. So trying to assess the decision-making based on a two-year historical lookback is fine, but it's all in the context of the moment you're making the decision. It can't be in the context of two years after the fact.
I thought NCTV was sending me a message. My mic is still working. Mrs. Strohs, did you have something? No, okay. Any further questions on STEM?
Workforce development.
You know, I... Freudian slip, workforce development. Mrs. Guyan.
When the culinary students are buying their consumables and they're putting on an event, I assume that, I guess depending on what it is, there are fees collected for it?
So, yeah, so there's two parts to that culinary program. There are funding that we provide them to run their instructional courses. Obviously catering is a component of that, however, they do charge a fee. It's obviously not for profit, it's really just to cover the expenses of the food and those are the, that is how they pay for those items, it's really based on what they charge.
So that money doesn't have to then either be, like some of our income goes into the town budget, it doesn't get, it's pretty...
No, they have their own, it's the student activities.
Yeah, he doesn't keep it in a bag or something, it goes into a student activity account.
Yeah, it goes into a student activity account where he deposited, deposits the money and, yeah, and that's...
So deposits it and takes it, or, you know, pays out of that to purchase the...
For catering events, yeah.
Yeah, purchase the supplies and then reimburses essentially. Okay, thank you.
That's exactly correct. Yeah. He also buys like aprons for kids and things like that as, you know, thank yous and again, that comes out of those, that student activity account. It'll give those to like a graduating senior.
Further questions on workforce development? Seeing none, we will turn to continuing adult education, which is the second gray tab.
Okay, so this program is for adults 17 years or older. The adult education program, it has two components. There's the mandated side in which we have to include, you know, our evening high school GED preparation and testing. We have our adult basic education and then we have the English to speakers of other languages and then we have our citizenship. And then the other component is our non-mandated program, which is really our enrichment courses. The evening high school program runs from September to June. That is for students that can take a variety of courses in math, science, history, art, and English. They also have a counseling program within that and students are able to earn 20 high school credits so that they can receive their high school diploma. There is the GED preparation program, which really just provides kids an opportunity to get, to prepare for the test and take a test, which is a shortened version of that high school diploma. And then we have our enrichment courses, as I mentioned earlier. That is one of the things that we've tried to work on with this program is to enhance some of those offerings, which I think we've done a really good job of. A lot of our instructors for those classes are some of our classroom teachers, which has been really great to get those folks on board. We've been teaching some Google classes, some pie making classes from our culinary teacher, Mr. Pesca. And really, this year, you know, for, to continue on with our program needs, we'd like to expand the program hours and some offerings for students so they have more opportunities to complete high school requirements and to continue to explore career pathways. We would like to develop some industry partners to enhance those opportunities so that they in turn might have a chance to go out and do an internship or have a mentor and to provide professional development for those teachers that are teaching those evening courses to help better their delivery of instruction. If I can turn your attention to the right-hand page, there is nothing, you know, no significant changes in our asks. We did go up a little bit, you know, in asking for some consumables as opposed to last year. This is just for, to help support some more project-based instruction and to support some of that career planning, to have some more tools. And then down below, we did ask for some increase in funding with textbooks and those are just to update some of the additions that we have. If I can bring your attention up to the printing side, some funding was cut with that. We've actually, it's becoming more digitized, so that was not a big problem with that. Any questions?
Mrs. Strohs?
Okay, other things we've gone through, printing seems really high. Why printing for this program so much higher?
So that goes out to every resident in the town of Newington.
With those little flyers in the town crier.
Yeah, we've partnered with, oh gosh, what is that, Newington Life? Is that what it's called or the Town Crier? So they've actually saved us in some costs. They actually create the flyer and it just goes into their, into their, yeah, their new publication. So we're minimizing some of that printing, but really that's just the cost. Yeah, that's it, covers that.
Mrs. Guyan.
That's great timing because mine's probably related to hers. So those, the second part of the program, the enrichment courses, those are available to all Newington residents?
Everyone, yep.
Okay.
And outside, it doesn't have to be a Newington residence. Could be someone from Southington, like myself.
For example, okay.
Uh, no, I don't think so. Yes.
Back to Mrs. Strohs.
Do we charge?
Mm-hmm.
And where does that come?
For the...
Where does that show?
So in the, do you mean...
So for the enrichment that Mrs. Guyan was talking about.
So the enrichment courses...
So like when you from Southington pay $500 to take a course?
It's only $50.
Okay. Well, maybe we should make it $500.
I'm not paying $500 for a pie making course, but I will pay $50 and then there might be a fee in terms of, you know, some additional like supplies that you might need. So it might be $75, but really that fee is to pay some of our costs in terms of our instructors. So they get, so Don Valera, who's our educational technology teacher, he's teaching a Google course, his, the fee is $50. That fee really goes to pay his salary and, yeah, those enrichment folks that are teaching those classes.
What's the budget transfer look like? So it goes into, is there, there's a separate account for continuing adult ed or how does that work, Lou?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, there's a separate student activity account for adult ed enrichment items. None of that goes through the operating budget. You know, your budget is strictly for the mandated side of the program.
That's right.
The rest of it is run as its own self-sustaining entity outside of our budget.
And how does that work in conjunction with the NTA's agreement for, so we have a teacher teaching an enrichment course for...
He's not required to teach that, so it's outside.
So it's completely outside of the contract and then the agreement is you just get the portion of the enrollment fee for your course.
Right, mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Sylvia?
All right, so...
Microphone, Mr. Sylvia?
First off, I'd like to...
Mr. Sylvia?
My apologies. Thank you. First off, thank you very much. This is a very conscientious submission and I appreciate the fact that, you know, went below our axels for last year and tried to maintain last year's efforts. That's great. I'm a little, what confused me and jumped out on this particular section was is that my math training, not that great, but any number times zero is zero. So where's your staffing?
So our staffing, that funding, we apply for a grant, a governmental grant, right? And that grant goes to the town side. I don't know how it all works because it's very confusing to me, but, yeah.
Okay. The board does the direct appropriation to fund the adult ed program. There is an ongoing state grant similar to the Education Class Sharing Grant for adult ed purposes. We get about $40,000 a year from the grant toward the overall expenses. That goes to the town, just like the ECS grant. We get our appropriation, there's no crossover of the two. The FTEs that are here are for full-time benefited people. Everybody who works the adult ed program is, you know, teaching one class, maybe two, all part-time, you know, non-unionized type of activities and they're getting basically a course stipend to teach one course or two courses. So it has a much different operational scheme than what the traditional school operations are with teachers during the workday.
So that's the new definition of what the certified 111 and 112 is, is that they have to be receiving a pension?
No, certified, they have to be certified teachers.
They have to be certified.
But not members of the bargaining unit and they do not receive any benefits and they do not have a formal appointment from us other than for the course.
That's correct. And in fact, those teachers that we employ in our evening program, I think all but one are not, are not our teachers. So I think one, Steph Kaplan, right, is, she teaches...
It sounds to me to be more like contracted services, that basically, hey, you teach this class, you get this much money, right?
But they're paid on payroll, so they have payroll taxes that we have to address.
Not W-9?
Correct.
That's right. It's 1099, 1099.
All right, thanks.
Now Lou, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure what the CAFR will show on this because the grant from the state, will it show our operating budget plus the grant in the CAFR under this, do you know?
I believe it does.
Right, so that would be very misleading.
On the expenditure side.
Right, that would be very misleading. It would appear that our budget was, what do we get for the grant, was it $43,000 or something like that?
Well, that, yes, that would be, that would be town revenue, just like the ECS.
Okay, okay.
That would not be our expense. The monies for the enrichment side, the student activity accounts are audited every year and are integrated into the overall results of the town.
Right.
But they're not part of the board operating budget.
Right, but I don't know what the CAFR shows. The CAFR may show the, may show the grant in addition, which can be very misleading.
Yeah, I'd have to go back, I can't visualize it right now.
Yeah, that's because we don't get that money back to, yeah.
Further questions on continuing adult ed? Seeing none, Mrs. Davis, I believe that's all for you. We have...
Thank you. Thank you.
And I know Mr. Myers and Mrs. Colios are waiting. We have been here for two hours around the table. I just wanted to get a pulse of the room if people need a five-minute break to stretch and get up for a moment or if we are ready to proceed. Anyone?
I have a left knee that's a one minute.
We will take a five-minute break. I don't know that NCTV will shut anything off, so please turn off the microphones. The videos are likely still running, so be aware of that if you need to stretch your leg. Please do so, we will read adjourn in five minutes. Okay, we are back, read adjourning after our brief recess. We, I just want to make a couple of announcements as we're getting back into this. Again, our budget is online, if you're just tuning in now, at npsct.org. You can follow along, there's a PDF of the line-by-line budget that we're going through. I also neglected to mention at the start tonight, Dr. Collins did mention to me before the meeting that he is diligently working on his citizens guide to the budget, which is a very useful document he's produced in the last few years so that everyone in town can have a different way of looking at this than just the line-by-line or his budget presentation. It looks at the major factors of the budget and what's driving the request for this year. He expects that that will be published at the beginning of next week and there will also be a one-page budget at a glance document that he's had out for the public the last couple of years, which is on a similar timeframe, so please look out for those. Welcome to the table, Mr. Myers. We will start with student activities, non-athletic. That is behind the second brown tab in our books.
Give everybody a second. Good evening, I'm here with you for two sections. For the non-athletic portion, student activities, this is our focal areas in K through 12, really. They go from the elementary schools to the middle schools to the high school. These are the opportunities we provide students after hours. These are things that are run by student interest along with school structure. Items that come from this are ping pong, table tennis club, esports club, also Homer Club, but it also goes to the school structure of things along the lines of class, like 12th grade advisor, 11th grade advisor, drama club, things that allow the school to function and provide opportunities for us. At the beginning of each year, principals and myself sit down, the principals of the middle schools, myself sit down, there are two funds that it comes from. One is a B2 club, which is in a lot of amount of money that's in the contract. And we sit down and kind of go through the clubs that we're going to offer throughout the year. And again, at the high school, we offer anywhere from 35 to 40 clubs each year, just making sure that we can provide different opportunities for our students that may not have a connection with athletics. But we want to make sure that they are staying after, that they do have a connection with Newington High School, along with Martin Kellogg and John Wallace, making sure that the students, you know, have somewhere to go that might spark their interest in something new that they might never know that they were excited about. So everything's relatively straightforward, so you have that allotment of money for those clubs and you also have other contracted positions. So say at the high school, we have drama club coordinator and like I mentioned, class advisors, things of that nature that are in the contract and that's where you get, on the right-hand page, that's where you get your dollar amounts that will come from there. For the, some of the supply lines, those are dollars that could potentially be used for maybe something, dinner or something that a club may request, but that money is spread throughout all of our schools. Are there any questions in regards to our non-athletic section?
Questions, Mr. Sylvia?
First off, I want to compliment you on my analysis of all of the CAFRs over the last nine years. This one account had the best budgeting effort that I've seen across, since 2010. Basically, you're able to manage your budget to within a plus or minus 2%, which is unbelievable. And I just wanted to commend you for that or previous athletic directors, whomever was in the history, I haven't only been here for the last two years, but I wanted to commend this particular account, so.
Well, give the credit to people that are, you know, running the programs and doing things for the school district. Again, most of them do it because they love it and it's something that they can add to our school.
Any other questions? This is Mrs. Guyan.
Just real quick, is student council part of this?
Yes.
At the, like, elementary level all the way through?
Correct, yeah, so that's one of the, again, as the, as you go up in schools, the more offerings that will be provided. Elementary, that's more or less the focal point of this area. And then once you get to middle school, you offer, you say the Homer Club, just a few others. And then once you get to the high school, we do offer pretty robust offerings.
So fairly straightforward, all the salaries are contracted. All the salaries are contractual in nature. There are some supplies that are spread among requests. Everyone good? These are, these are the, the amounts that are given for stipends for all of the program areas are part of, are, they're attached to an appendix in our contract.
Right.
With NTA.
Correct.
Our, our NTA contract. So we'll move on to Student Activities Athletic, which is the third green tab, which is the next in our budget page, and should be, just scroll down a bit on the PDF online.
Try to make everything as convenient as possible, obviously.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
So, you know, our athletic programs, our, our main focus is to try to make sure we're, we're contributing to the, the focus of making sure our students are college career and citizenship ready. Our main goal is to make sure that we're providing opportunities around our athletic instruction, but ultimately, we know that our, most of our students are not going to go to become professional athletes. They may go to the next level to compete, but ultimately, we're trying to instill characteristics that they're going to be able to be successful in other facets of life and be able to carry with them into college or into the job path that they, that they choose. We presently participate in the largest athletic conference in the state, the Central Connecticut Conference. We offer every CIAC-sponsored sport, which is 27, and we have 62 teams that support those initiatives. We have a wonderful three-season program that really makes sure that if you have an interest in athletics, we offer an opportunity for you. I guess, is there any, would you like to, any questions for the athletic portion?
Sure. You know, I first want to mention that it was either last year or the year before, there was a proposal, when we were cutting, to potentially raise the participation fee, which is $75 a sport, up to a max of $150 for the school year. Play three, get one free. And ice hockey and gym, gymnastics has a slightly, a much higher rate due to the facility costs, but we did not do that. We did not raise the fees. We did not force the third sport to be paid for. We didn't do any of that because we felt around the board that it was important to maintain our sports for the athletics program and what it brings. The community made some other hard decisions because of that, but I did want to point that out, that that is a decision we've made, we had made as a board to keep that as important. I do have a question before I get to Mr. Branda, then Mrs. Strohs. What was the new equipment that was requested and cut for $6,000?
What line?
It's the 730 line?
One was a left, a five-man left sled, which is a, a larger football equipment piece. That was a little over $5,000. I'd have to go back and check on the additional thousand.
Okay.
But again, these are, these are, like, we, we've spoken about this evening, there are things that go in as line one, two, and three. So line one are the things that we're going to need to do to make sure that we can provide our student athletes an opportunity to compete. You know, that, that left sled is, is something that would be wonderful to have, you know, great addition, but something that, you know, isn't necessary for our programs to run. One of the benefits that we have in our community is that we have very supportive parents and community members. Mr. Tofel has, has been here for many years, making sure that our student athletes, you know, have things that they need. So a lot of times when, when we're unable to provide certain items, if the booster clubs are able, they're able to come in and pick up some of the slack. And they've done a tremendous job in all of our sports, you know, to try to make sure that we can make ends meet and provide those higher-level skill pieces to our student athletes.
I think it's also worthwhile for you to explain a little bit about the athletic fund, in that this, this isn't the total amount of money that's spent on athletics.
Correct. So you, so what you have is, through your participation fees, you have your $75, like Mr. Schulman mentioned, per sport. We cap it at two sports, so you get, you know, a third sport free. Again, we're trying to encourage right now in an environment that's much geared towards sports specialization, trying to add, you know, students that opportunity to participate in that third sport is a great piece for their overall well-being. Those funds go in and pay for things like officials' fees, tournament fees, anything that goes above and beyond in those particular areas, so that you don't see any of those costs that are related to the athletic fund.
Mr. Branda?
The supplies line?
Yes.
The points there, the, between the ask and then dropping it down to the 8,300, what is that attributed to?
Again, you're going to go through and look at a lot of items that coaches requested that would just go above and beyond what we need other than balls and, you know, things to, to operate the sport. You know, people make, some of our, you know, soccer ask, or some for, maybe some portable goals, things that we can use from field to field. We can make things work, it would just make life more convenient. So a lot of those pieces that are, that are removed would be upgrades to equipment, upgrades to items, or just providing, you know, newer equipment.
So is the reduction of the uniform cycle in this budget, or was that taken out?
That was taken out.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Is it right that, once in a while, some of that equipment or potential uniforms that are needed that aren't in the operational budget, if there's additional money in the athletic fund, that money is sometimes used for those purposes?
Correct. Yes, correct.
Mrs. Strohs?
Oh, I just fell off my chair. How many students actually are in these programs? Like, how many take, do you have an idea of, like, how many children play three sports? How many play two?
Yeah, so I mean-
Like, how many actual students at, at the high school are playing sports?
Total athletes will have anywhere from 900 to 1,000. Unique, so like, one individual. We have anywhere roughly around 600. So when you say 900, that means that it's an individual that's playing multiple sports. And it'll vary year to year, but we're servicing a large number of our student, or a large number of our students throughout our school.
That's about half, half of all students?
Yeah, correct.
Next question's to you, Mr. Schulman.
Yeah.
When do we get to have a conversation about that $75? Is that as a board? Is that now, do I question it? I just, I, I'm just, we're talking about, like, I don't know if this is the time, and I don't want to miss the speaker.
I, I would say the time for, and in general, for any questions about the, the numbers that are here before us and wanting to change them, would start next Wednesday.
Okay.
So we'll have general discussions starting next Wednesday about the budget, and those are perfect times for questions about, do we feel it's appropriate to lower the $75, to raise the $75, to do X, Y, and Z to the budget? Should we add back in this item? Do we need more in this category? And then ask further questions to the administration to say, can you go back and find out X, Y, and Z about the different category items? And we'll get answers to a lot of the questions that we asked tonight at our next meeting on Wednesday, and then questions from that Wednesday the next week, and we'll continue on for as long as we need to. Thank you. Mr. Tofel?
The replacement of uniforms.
Yes.
I've been involved in going to a lot of the sporting events. In one of the teams that I've gone to, in the lower levels, the uniforms are at the, almost at the end of their cycle.
Correct.
And these teams look like bag of bombs when they're out there. I mean, they were wearing different pants.
Yeah.
Camouflage. The shirts didn't, had three different colored shirts on. And they represent the town of Newington, and when they go away, or even in town. And it's not really my interpretation as a town of Newington with seeing a sporting event going on with a bunch of kids that aren't dressed alike.
So the, the particular sport I believe you're referring to is got, there were, this is the year of the uniform place recycle? So you won't have that issue. And again, some of the, when we go through the cycle, sometimes up to 15 years, that people are trying to mix and match and make sure, you know, uniform gets ripped, you can't go and find a, you know, a uniform that was nine years ago, there's no way you're going to find a replacement for that, so you can't have to mix and match between years. As we cycle through, as those uniforms, you know, filter down, we do our best to keep them as, as, in shape as possible. We don't necessarily have the facilities where we're able to, you know, collect and wash every, our, our students do take them home, wash them, and then return them. And we do our best to keep them, over a period of 10 to 15 years, anything's going to get worked down pretty bad. So at times, depending on the sport, sometimes some of those items are a little more worn than others. The, the, again, when we get to that cycle point, and we get brand-new uniforms that come in, it makes the entire program look a lot more official and, and uniform in that cause.
Also, on transportation for the teams going out of town.
Yes.
Some of the buses aren't equipped to handle with all the equipment and everything else, plus the number of children on the bus. They've got equipment all over the bus and everything else. I think it's got to be addressed, especially in the vans.
So we do our best to work with Transportation Department. I, I guess the, our, our main goal is to always make sure that the, the programs can be moved safely and efficiently. There are days when we have many, many trips that go out. We know, we make sure that the number, that the capacity of the bus never exceeds what the expectation is. There are times when we'll put some of our medical kits or bags on individual seats, but those will occupy, you know, with, with the, the number of seats that are available for the student athletes. Jake, we take that into a very, you know, tight-knit account. We make sure our coaches put the exact number of students that they're going to have, so that before we go out on our trips, we know exactly what it's supposed to be. And that's what's placed in those, in those transportation, those buses. For some of our programs, some, hockey, you know, having undercarriage storage is obviously ideal. Sometimes we're not able to have that undercarriage storage. So again, we'll have to use seating to, to place some of those bags, but the number of individuals that are allowed on the bus never exceeds the numbers of seats that are available. It's not a perfect science. I would love to say that we could go out and provide, you know, premier limousine buses where, you know, we have a ton of stairs underneath. We have had, you know, addition a couple of years ago with a reused bus that did have undercarriage storage, which was great. But we do our best to, to provide our student athletes with, you know, as comfortable accommodations as possible. Because of the number of trips, it's not always exact.
And I can kind of pick up on that. We, we did have to replace a box truck that we use for the football and some of the games for the band, so that shouldn't be a problem for, as far as trucking, some of the equipment there. The busing is a bit of a problem. The athletic buses are 14, 15 years old and, and aren't the most reliable to send out of town. We typically use the, the long, flat-nose rear-engine buses, and after we use them as school buses for several years, we then paint them over to use them as athletic buses. We haven't had the ability to do that. We still have two more that we, we'd like to paint over to, to kind of refresh the ones that are there. Because I think we had one trip that they got, with the bus broke down three times, we sent three buses.
The boy's soccer bus that-
Yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately-
Right.
The bus that went to, to pick them up actually broke down after-
Right. I mean, I know. It probably would be best, because, because you, you do want them with the hole underneath storage, because then you can just, in most cases, just send a bus, and not have to send a truck with it for the uniforms. You know, it's more efficiently, efficient to do that. I'd like to buy new ones, that would be ideal, but that, in this, I wouldn't recommend that right now.
Yeah, there's a few sports that are specific to the addition of under, undercarriage storage, boys, boys lacrosse, ice hockey, football. You know, having additional storage on those trips is, you know, would be ideal. Sometimes we're just not able to be afforded those buses.
Further questions on athletics? Dr. Branda?
Hi, Chris. Would you say that it's a hardship for, I was on the same line as, as Ms. Strohs, a hardship for some students to pay $150 or even $75 to play sports?
A hard, I mean, paying for athletics, as a parent of two little children, I realize that athletics are not cheap, when you start looking at what programs are out there. Providing a free opportunity for our students to participate in athletics, obviously, we provide a lot of positive attributes and characteristics to our program that can grow. I, I don't think you'd have to ask the parents. I don't think they're not accustomed to paying for some level of, of athletic involvement. If you looked at us comparatively to surrounding districts, we are very affordable. And, and many districts are, continue to increase, and to, really to thank you to the board, who's really stayed solid on, on, on the fees that we presently have.
Right. I'm not saying that we should charge less, but maybe provide a scholarship opportunity for those that can't afford it, or-
Are there waivers?
We, we have a hardship waivers. And individuals come in and, you know, we don't have an extreme amount on a yearly, you know, it's, it's not at a point where we're getting, you know, hundreds of requests, but individuals who are having financial hardships, we do take that into consideration and do apply waivers where they're deemed necessary.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Tofel?
I know the sport booster club that I belong to, volunteers to, with the coach, has the idea that if we do have a hardship, if the child will come forward and ask, speak to a couple of the members who are assigned to it, we do pay for the fees.
And a lot of that, yeah, and a lot of that is, is summer camps, you know, things that the booster club are able to sponsor. I, you know, I don't think there's any student athlete in the district that does not participate due to dollars. I, I think we do a good job of identifying and supporting those individuals.
And it seems like we might have a conversation about that, but I agree, Chris. Any further questions? Seeing none. Mr. Myers, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
And we are moving on to Special Education. Ms. Colioso, who has been patiently waiting for us, you drew the short straw, and you're the last of, of the ones to come up. We are in the second purple tab.
Yes.
For Special Education. And this is another program area that we have a new budget page that, again, as I learned earlier this evening, only has to do with the dollars in the 17, 18 appropriation, doesn't have anything to do, but I want to make sure everyone gets the right page, and so we're all looking at the same thing. So we'll give that a moment.
So thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to present the Special Education Student Services budget. I would like to draw your attention to the left-hand page. As you can see, our student services include special education students with all disabilities ages 3 to 21, and the EL department, which serves students in grades K to 12. Our major goals remain consistent as in the past years. In summary, our major goals are to ensure that all students, regardless of their disability or language proficiency, are college career and citizenship ready, and while adhering to local, all while adhering to local and state man, local and federal man, state mandates. The description of our, our current programming, we service students pre-K, which usually starts at age 3, through the age of 21. Our students have varying abilities and disabilities. We offer a full spectrum of programming, and that programming is determined through the student's IEP and the PPT process. We go from everything from the most restrictive environment, which would be a homebound setting, to a, the least restrictive environment, which would be the inclusion classroom with supplementary aids and services.
Ms. Colioso, I, I'm sorry, I, I just want to make sure that you can hear Mr. Sylvia, if you need a second.
I'll hear you.
Okay, I, I understand. I just wanted to give you the chance. Okay.
Okay. No, thank you. Okay. So we, in Newington, we really try to provide the needs for all of our students, but there are times when students do need to be outplaced. And again, that is done through PPT decision, and an IEP is developed that cannot be delivered within the confines of the Newington Public School System. The outplacements and the tuitions probably are the most volatile part of our, our budget. And when we talk about uncertainties, that probably is the biggest uncertainty. We have had eight families move in this year who are affected by the storms, the hurricanes in Puerto Rico. So those are EL students who have definitely impacted our EL staff, and are, I believe we're like up to approximately 225 EL students with four certified staff members. We also had a family member just move into Newington. Their child attends a magnet school. We received the first magnet school bill. It is $40,000 between now and the end of the school year to cover special education So, moving on to improvements. We continue to increase our use of technology with students within the classroom. Our teachers and tutors are assisting with data collection and progress monitoring, which is required through IDEA. And our program needs are additional full-time And our program needs are additional full-time EL teacher. Mrs. Marocca and I were able to fund an EL position last year, but as we know, title funds are not guarantees. Any questions on that?
Okay. I do want to start by drawing everyone's attention to the 560 line. That's the tuition line, which is the largest line item, I believe, in any budget we have. You'll notice from the appropriation of this current school year to next year, it's an increase of about $500,000 or it may be exactly $450,000. If you think back to the non-lapsing fund discussion that we had, we knew at the beginning of this school year, we had a deficit of about $450,000. So that non-lapsing fund was earmarked for the $450,000 in tuition. So this shows $2.667 million for this current budget year. When you add the $450,000 from the non-lapsing fund, you come up with the same amount that is in the superintendent's proposal for this coming school year in 18-19. So it's not, it shows as a $450,000 increase in this line item from year over year, but it's actually the same amount we're being spent, just all in one fund this year.
Did it cut the $40,000?
It does not include the $40,000 that Mrs. Gugliosa talked about, which is one of the issues we have when we reconcile at the end of the year, because that $40,000 has to come from somewhere. And it can't come from the tuition budget because we've already earmarked all of that money to be spent, essentially. So that $40,000 has to be, unfortunately, we use the word "found a lot" around this table, quote unquote, but that really means we make a conscious decision not to spend money on something, somewhere, and then that money gets transferred into special at the end, at the end of the year budget transfer. So, Mr. Brand, I did see your hand, and then Mrs. Strohs, and then Mrs. Guyan, and maybe I was wrong, but that's...
I think you were right.
I've been right a lot of the night, so...
Just to piggyback off of your explanation for the tuition, is that the same situation 16-17 to 17-18? Was non-lapsing funds used?
There was no non-lapsing fund. We were just, we just had, we knew there was going to be an increased need, so that was increased by $500,000. Had we known, we would have really needed a million-dollar increase in tuition.
So there's a chance, right, that the 3.1 could be more?
Absolutely.
So is the 3.1 based on, is it what we know or is it what we know plus a little bit more? It's what we know?
It's what we know.
Okay.
And that is, obviously, they have a pipeline of students that have IEPs that they're cognizant of, that needs may be changing, and they go through all of their staff and all of the IEPs to see what may turn into an outplacement, and that's how they calculate it. And that's also based on, obviously, the students that are outplaced now and what the expectation is for that outplacement next year.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mrs. Strohs, Mrs. Guyan, then Mrs. Stam.
My question is to you, I think, more than to this side. I'm concerned that you requested 3.8 million, and, you know, I very rarely want to add any money to a budget, but, and Dr. Collins, the 3.1, are we going to be, like, where did you come up with the 3.8? And are we going to be short with it, too much with the 3.1? I don't know which side to ask that to.
Yeah, no. She asked, she put in what she felt was responsible. And, you know, there was a line, I mean, I was at, I was at 11.74% for, I can't tell you the longest time. I was really stuck at 11.74. And then I got it down to eight-something, and I reached another plateau and everything. And I knew I had to get it down to what I consider to be the most responsible.
It's my assumption, though, that the cut doesn't impact students we know 100% will be outplaced next year.
Right.
Correct.
So that this is an additional amount that you believe there's a good probability that there will be additional outplacements over and above the 3.1 million dollars for tuition. So you requested it. At this point, it's not a certainty for those students.
Correct.
I don't think we cut it, we didn't cut it out of there, we cut it out of other areas.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, there is a $713,000 cut in tuition.
Okay. In tuition?
And so he, Dr. Collins must have come to you and asked you what is not a certainty? Is that how that works?
So, what also happened is that we had students who were projected for next year. So for whatever reason, they moved out of town, or if maybe we now have an ED program in district, maybe we can bring a student back. There were three students who we had on a projected list, and because we were able to develop the ED program, ED classroom over at Patterson, that was like a $300,000 saving, $300,000 savings probably right there.
So it's a good example of what happens when we start in September, and then now we're in January, so things change and the budget changes with it. So that's, thank you for that. And what is ED? The ED program?
Emotional disturbance.
But the 3.1 covers everybody who's right now.
Who's currently, right.
Yeah.
But not the $40,000.
Right. That I just learned about right now.
Just moved in. Just got the bill.
Mrs. Guyan was next, then Mrs. Stam and Dr. Braverman, I just saw you, so you will be third.
So we're all thinking alike here, and my question has now been answered twice, so thank you.
This is the second, I'm just going to, this is the second time tonight someone else answered your question, Emily, so...
Why are we talking about her?
Mrs. Stam.
Have we received the increases from the private facilities for the next year yet? Do we know what they're predicting their increases to be? And, go ahead.
Yes and no.
Not all of them. I know they don't come in consistently, so that's a good thing to know. Fees do go up in all those facilities, but they don't always let you know in a timely fashion. And we're at their beck and call. You know, so you might get them now, you might not get them until, like, closer to the end of the year. So it's hard to project what the fees will be and those tuitions will be, totally. And one thing that I used to do was, I used to do a 3% addition to what I had, what I would guesstimate, what I have right now, I know I have right now, and I would add 3% so that I would know that there could be, the fees could increase, and I could have a new kid moving in or someone that we need to outplace in an emergency situation. So that's just an idea, and that's what I used to do.
Dr. Braverman?
Marlena, so I'm on the CW Board, constructive workshop, and we had a meeting. There's big changes, federal legislation and state legislation for the students 18 to 21. So is that impact, they can't, they need to be more outside, not inside? They can't be in a one spot all day? So is that impacting what we're planning for our students?
Dr. Collins, and I just had this conversation. So those are all proposals that are going to be coming forward. We have a phenomenal transitional academy program that is not located in the school, which is a number 100-plus. And that we do have community outings already built into our curriculum. We already have field trips built into our curriculum, as well as the functional curriculum that's built in as well. So we're already, hopefully, ahead of that game.
Excuse me, the mandate of what's coming up?
As it's stated right now, yes. If they throw us a curveball, we'll have to deal with it. But as of right now, we are, we're ahead of that one.
Mrs. Guyan?
Just to follow up on Cindy's question from before, what kind of increases are these facilities asking for for next year, from what you have in so far, like, what kind of percentage?
So it's interesting, because it is around that 2% to 3%.
We also got a note, I think I forwarded it to the board members from CREG, stating that, I mean, at one point, we got a 35% increase. So depends on how they're funded at the state level and what their needs are. They are going to pass them on to us, so, for their needs, for magnet school tuition and special, you know, whatever services they provide, they need to pay the bills to. So they pass those on to us. So we're not really sure. And we typically will get those in September.
Mr. Sylvia?
We don't have any opportunity to stop-gap that, stop-gap that and backstop it. It's just that we have to sit here and take, oh, by the way, now it's $57,000 for Steve Sylvia and...
Right. It's a consolidated service, so when the, when the rest, the regional education service centers were designed or developed in the 60s, it was designed, they were designed to consolidate all the different towns, like in this area, the Hartford County, for all of our students to go to one location to save money. It has evolved into something different completely because they play by a different set of rules. And so they are allowed to charge whatever they like in addition to the state money. So it didn't quite work in our favor as much as we would have liked to. They are a place to go, but as we know with the expulsion program, it's $365 a day. So we can do that cheaper in-house. So that didn't really accomplish the economies of scale that I think we were looking for on that back in the 60s.
Thank you. But the, there is some stop-gap pending state funding with the excess cost grant that districts receive. Once we spend four and a half times the amount that our per pupil expenditure is, so this year, that would be somewhere around $75,000, give or take, then the state is supposed to give us back money once we spend over. So if we have, for example, if we have a kid in an outplacement for $100,000, we are supposed to get, it's supposed to be 100%, isn't it? So that's how, is that how it's supposed to be?
It's supposed to be 100%, but the pool is only so big.
So we're supposed to get $25,000 back. The state winds up with a sum of money. They look at the requests from the districts for excess cost back, and then they give you whatever it is that they give you. And I don't know if we know the percentage that it's been recently, but that's what we're supposed to get. But that money also doesn't go into our operational budget.
Right. Your $600,000, you have a net budget, so your operational budget is actually about $600,000 higher. Our actual costs are about $600,000 higher. We have $600,000 covered through, hopefully, the grant, which almost got pulled this year.
So, and we've had some slides on that, I don't think we did this year, but in years past, where what we actually anticipate spending would be $3.7 million. We anticipate the state giving us about $600,000 back based on previous years and what we expect to spend on each of the students. So that's kind of our stop-gap insurance, but the amount of kids we have outplaced is purely determined by PPTs and their IEPs and whether or not we have the facilities that can handle their needs. So there is some stop-gap and, you know, and stop-gap in our processes where we've put in classes, like the autism class, to prevent outplacements because we then bring in the BCBA, the board certified behavioral analyst, to come in and do some of those functions that we otherwise in previous years would have had to outplace those students. So that's kind of how we ensure those two different ways that our costs don't get to, don't skyrocket. Thank you. Mrs. Stam to add?
I don't know whether you answered that. Lou, what are you hearing out there, like, with the other new, the other business managers? What is the percentage we're hearing that we're going to get back for excess costs this year, that what they're estimating it might be? Do you know yet?
Yes, we got a notification a couple of days ago on that. Right now, on the preliminary, it was 74% of what was put in. The statewide pool is $50 million cap. So if you're at seven, roughly, say 75%, they roughly have 67, $70 million of claims against the pool. So everybody gets a proration. And they said they thought it was going to drop somewhere between 70 and 72% by the time they do their second payment in May. So that would just be adjusted downward in your second payment, you know, to get a net 72%, or whatever the final number is at that point.
Is that where our net funding is?
Yes.
So we anticipate, we have anticipated getting about 70% back?
Our number was, yeah, $600,000. We had a little, we had a 50% percentage because there's so much uncertainty with what was happening at the state level this year. So we'll be a little ahead of that in actual dollars.
It kind of seemed like 100%?
No.
Many times, we've seen 80%. I haven't seen much more than 80% ever.
Thank you. Mr. Branda?
The eight families from Puerto Rico based on the storm, is that, do they represent the need for the extra teacher? Or if everything worked out and they decided Newington wasn't for them and Puerto Rico turns out to be Puerto Rico again, hopefully, do we still need that teacher? Or is that...
220, approximately 225 students right now throughout the town of Newington are being serviced by four special, four EL teachers and one tutor.
Yeah, it's actually 277, not counting the new students.
We would still need it.
225.
227.
227. Sorry. Thank you.
Sorry, that includes the eight? That does not include the eight? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Tuft?
As far as the, I heard earlier, the field trips were included? And if I look across on the 323, it's zero?
Yep. It got cut.
So how are we going to do the field trips?
So...
Maybe within walking distance?
We collect bottles. So some of the, there's some parent participation, and some of the families were asked to donate, but I think that that is definitely something that we need to look at.
Further questions on special education? Mrs. Stam?
Just to follow up with that, but the transportation that's in there, they bring them to job sites, that's included in, so transportation to job sites and work experiences and the, and the, those, those things that are necessary for curriculum purposes and for them to, you know, become citizens that are, you know, able to participate in the community. The extra, I didn't get that. So the field trips are those, you know, the fairs and things like that? So they're asking, right, so now they're asking parents to help with those offsets?
Offset that cost.
And, believe it or not, when we did the program, we were doing the cans too. And it was amazing because all the teachers, all the staff, we would all, like, the central office would donate our cans, they were able to do amazing things with that. And people don't understand how much that just adds up real fast, so...
Back to Mr. Branda.
So in terms of when you're working on this budget, and then Dr. Collins, you have your recommendation, how do you go from, like, media and library? How do you jump it up to the 10,000-plus and then wipe out the field trips? Like, how, is it not something where you can kind of split those costs and maybe not get as much in the media and library materials? And then you can still afford the field trips? How, what's that thought process?
Yeah, that's going to be up to the department, really. So what they can do is if they really want to go on those and they, but right now, they've identified those media and library materials as priority one. So they may decide that maybe it's not priority one, and the field trip, maybe they want to go on or something like that. They can do that next year. But right now, the way they've identified things, I really didn't have, you know, much of a choice.
And I think this is a good, so the department heads, you know, it's not Dr. Collins calling the shots for next school year, 18-19, in every department and program area. What I expect would happen in all of these places is eight months from now, 12 months from now, if there's $2,500 in media library and they realize that there's something that they can do without in media library, but there are some trips that they really want to take that benefit the curriculum, that were on the list before and weren't funded, that would be a decision the program would be able to make in the amount that they have in their program area, you know, and that holds true for all program areas, I would say. But right now, these are the priority, these are the decisions that are made and you're forecasting out.
A lot of these are IEP-driven, so you need them to either fulfill IEPs or you need them to fulfill curricular obligations. Where the field trip is, it's great if you could. So that's how we looked at that.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
But I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear for anybody who's watching or anything, how that process goes, rather than just say, you know, it's not Dr. Collins with a red pen, just saying no, and then it's done. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood the process.
Mrs. Guyan, did you have something?
Ironically, that was my same question.
Mrs. Strohs?
I don't believe her. Where in the budget is the extra additional preschool teacher needed for?
Needed for the special education preschool class.
Now, that is a proposal, and so that will be in the board's budget awaiting funding.
And that was what I attempted to email you about for the STEM, and I was incorrect. New proposals for plans proposals get held in the Board of Education account. As soon as we adopt the budget, that is then reallocated into the budget area, but it's held there so that it's an easy cut. I don't mean it like that, but it's easy, pennable. I don't mean it like that, but it's easy pen and paper wise to remove it from the Board of Ed account rather than putting it throughout the budget. So that's, that's where that will be held, and we'll get to there, I believe, tomorrow. Are there further questions on special education? Seeing none, we will move on to psychological services, which is the third red tab. And I'm just going to say it again, if anyone's tuning in now, the Board of Ed budget book that we are going through is online in a PDF format on npsct.org. Maybe they'll have a graphic by tomorrow night to put when I, when I say that. And I, I believe it's in alphabetical order. I haven't looked at it online, so we are on psychological services. I hope you can find it quickly. I'm sorry, we don't, I don't even know if it's numbered or not. And for us here, it's the third red tab. I think we've all found it, though. Great. Thank you.
All right. So the, again, thank you for the opportunity to share the psychological and social work budget for the 2018-19 year. Again, our major goals have not changed. The social workers and psychologists are members of the student services team. Their major goals, of course, is to support students and families. The psychologists conduct assessments and provide direct or group counseling to students. Social workers provide support services to students and families and assist families with access and community supports. Psychs and social workers provide consultation to school teams and assist students who are struggling behaviorally, socially, and emotionally, and they help them to access the general education curriculum. Of course, they are an integral part of the PBT team, the planning and placement team. Our program description, our social, social workers and psychologists are responsible for individual and group counseling of students pre-K through age 21. These individuals also support students and families. The school psychologists play a key role in the identification of student with disabilities. In their counseling roles, both the psych and social workers provide assistance to families and school teams. For program improvements, there are no improvements at this time. Program needs, we talked at length during a curriculum meeting about the need for the continuum of services and the additional staff. We are requesting is one full-time social worker and one full-time school psychologist. Any questions?
Thank you. I was going to bring that up as well. We had an extensive, incredibly enlightening conversation about that. It's my expectation, we'll probably have a discussion at the full board table over the next couple of weeks about that proposal to add those services at the middle level, the pros and cons to adding it to our budget, and what that looks like. I did want to ask two things. One is a quick question. The 1617 account for tests, it dropped by $1. I'm curious if that was a typo.
It probably was.
Okay. My assumption is we're getting the same thing as last year, but, okay. And if anyone knows the contracted services, from 1617, we spent $57,000. Last year, this current year, we have nothing budgeted there. What was that, hoping it was some kind of one-time expense, or is it a, is it a program that runs every couple of years or?
Yeah. No, this was the case where we had several long-term absences in the Department for Staff. We had to contract out through a third party for coverage. So we had the savings on the salary side, and we had to pay contract services.
I do remember that we had, we had quite a few absences at the exact same time and couldn't fill them.
Correct.
So Josh, am I interpreting that the discussion we had at the curriculum meeting will be in the plan section?
So those proposals are located at the yellow pages at the very back of the budget are the plans proposals that are not included in the budget. So Dr. Collins did not include those two positions in his budget to us. They are.
Okay. So it's, it's under the miscellaneous tab?
It's that, yep, that miscellaneous tab is all the plans proposals that are not moving forward. And so as in years past, we will likely, I'm sure at some point, we will discuss the pros and cons for several of those programs that are not currently included in the budget.
Thank you.
Further questions on psychological services? Last chance, Mrs. Strohs. Okay. We will move on to speech hearing services, which is the third purple tab. It is right next to the tab we were just on.
So again, thank you for the opportunity to share the speech and language budget for 2018-19. Major goals, again, remain the same. Speech-language patholog, if speech-language pathologist is getting late. Evaluate, identify, and provide services in district and at the Emmanuel Christian Academy. Description of current program, our current speech-language pathologist, I need one, are responsible to respond to parental and birth-to-three referrals even prior to the student turning three. We had had this discussion, I can't remember at what juncture, but people were very surprised to find out that we were evaluating students when they were not even three years old. As soon as a child turns three and they have a suspected disability, we need to provide programming for them. So their evaluation process and their meeting with the speech-language pathologist and many of the other team members, OTPT, happens prior to a child turning three. Children as young as 2.5 may be referred through birth-to-three, through parents, through physicians, or through the birth-to-three system. Most of the students coming through that system are for hearing delays and speech delays. Speech-language pathologists are part of the team and are responsible to evaluate and plan appropriate programming. And again, speech-language pathologists work with students age three through the age of 21. Usually at the older grades, it is in a consultative model, but they are still providing needed services at the older grades as well. Our program needs, we will continue to monitor our students presenting with increasing needs in the area of speech and language, specifically with hearing impairments and feeding and swallowing. We are seeing many more students coming in with feeding and swallowing protocols who require special diets, special preparations of foods, and that speech-language pathologists and the nursing staff play a huge part in that. And for program needs, again, we are looking to meet the needs of our increasing number of students who need speech and language, feeding and hearing services, especially in that pre-K population. So again, turning attention to the budget side, bright pages, it's pretty much the same, right? Just a little bit of an increase. No increase? Oh, yeah, no increase. Sorry about that. Flat.
Mrs. Guin.
How many students are we servicing at Emmanuel Christian?
Nine.
Nine? And how many do we, are being serviced? Let's see, I guess there's a whole bunch of breakdowns that I'm thinking of right now. Like how many are in that, how many kids do you see under three? How many kids are we evaluating under the age of three per year?
I can get you that number, but you, it is a lot. I don't want to ballpark it and give you the wrong amount, but I can get that for you if you'd like.
Well, I'm not sure if it's really, yeah, I guess I would be interested in that. And then how many kids are we servicing? Three to 21?
So servicing as far as getting direct speech-language services?
Yes.
So of our population, we have approximately 600 students who are identified. Probably at least a third of those are getting services in speech and language.
So what are the other ones identified?
So you may have a student like with ADHD.
Okay.
Who may not require speech and language services.
Oh, special ed identified students, a third of them get speech and language?
Right.
Okay. That makes sense. And the highest, the highest percentage of them, those students would be in the lower, I mean, I assume in the preschool through elementary?
Right. Preschool through five, six.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
In our conversation about English language learners, you've identified the need for additional staff because of the ratio, and it would be better to service those students with more staff. You did talk about the increasing needs for speech and language services, but at this time, there's not a need or the need is not as great as in English learning or?
So right now, what we're finding is we can, we might be able to look at reallocation of staff and being able to better service because, again, the speech-language pathologists can, are acting as consultants as well as direct services, but their direct services are in smaller snippets of time, maybe 30 minutes a week and maybe three hours a month. So depending on what the child needs, if they have a significant stuttering disability, they might be seen daily. So it really, it's more dependent on the student and the type of disability. So it's not as, it's not the same type of servicing like through EL who might need it throughout the entire day because they are total non-speaking.
Okay. And I did have one other question similar to the last program area. We had a consultant last year for $34,000 that was not appropriated this current budget year or next year. Do we know what that was?
I would have to go research, and I'm not personally familiar with this one.
All right. Thanks. Mrs. Strohs.
Do we bill back to any like medical insurance, like other districts for any of these services?
We do now.
And where does that come into?
We don't know.
A budget?
This is new?
No, no. We've always billed. We have not billed for Medicaid. So this is our first year billing for Medicaid. So we're just entering into that right now.
What does the procedure look like, Lou?
There is the public school CIP fund, which accepts tuition, building rental money from board activities. This would be considered in the tuition area for, you know, directorship, tuition cost and related services. So if we're, did a $5,000 valuation for somebody else or another district student that's going to school here, we'd be able to bill that back. It would ultimately cycle through the public school CIP fund, and it would be available for reappropriation for, you know, assigned purposes the following year.
Do we have any idea the magnitude of what we're talking about?
For the Hartford magnet school kids that are attending here, not magnet, so the Hartford choice students that are attending here, it could be, you know, over $100,000. You know, it has been even higher than that, depending on the year and the.
And Medicaid reimbursements that we previously.
Medicaid is different than that. That's just the open choice piece.
But that would be money that we typically.
Right.
What's the magnitude? I guess my question is, what's the magnitude of the new, whatever the new processes that we're now doing?
We're hoping it's just a break even for us. The reason for the legislation was that the state gets their cut of all the activity at all the districts. So if we're able to generate $50,000 of Medicaid revenues, they will get 25 of it. We will get $25,000 of it. It will cost us staffing money to support that, to actually file the claims, manage the whole process. So we're only really looking at a break even on our side, and the state is going to win on that.
Does that mean we're hiring someone specifically for that role?
No, at this time, we did not. We're just basically expanding the role of two staff members, and there may be some overtime to pick up. So we'll just have to see how it goes before we make permanent commitments to permanently staff that.
When will we be able to get a report on how this first year goes?
I would say realistically, the first report would not be until sometime after July 1st. You know, we're pretty much in a mode where we're targeting, like getting ramped up for an April start.
Okay.
We won't see any money on that for three to six months afterwards.
But if we put a note for our September meeting to get an update on what that wound up looking like, that would be doable?
Yeah, we might be ready for that at that point.
Okay. Think it'd be interesting to know what comes in.
How that worked out.
How it worked out.
Right.
If there's additional money that is above break even for other purposes. I don't know who had a hand up, but Mrs. Stam will go there.
So what other services are we billing Medicaid for? Just, are we doing?
All related services.
Oh, you are doing that. You just haven't done speech and language prior to this. Okay. That's good to know. And then, just to go back on the, the way we're, I know there's a need and we're seeing an increased need, but there's also, within the last couple of years, there's been a shift in the service model trend that you're teaching the psychologist, the speech and language pathologist, how to provide services in a different model so that you can cover more bases. So that if people aren't understanding why we're like, there's a big need, and like, why aren't we asking from our staff? There is a new trend out there in training, training the speech and language pathologists in programs and ways to use their time more efficiently and to service those kids in different fashions.
Mrs. Strohs.
Did we previously bill Medicaid or Medicare or?
No.
For special ed, so nothing? So is it possible that come April, we at least get a number of how much we bill to them so we can get an idea? And not have to wait for the reimbursed, do you know what I'm saying? So we don't have to wait until the reimbursement comes in? We can at least know what the billable amount went out was?
So, yes, we're contingent upon the state giving us what we need because this passed, literally, I think it was October 31st, and they told us that we had to have it in place by December 1st. A lot of districts are in the same boat that we are because we didn't have, so we have to apply for NPI numbers and taxonomy numbers, and the state now is very backlogged because we're still waiting for. So we're hoping to have it up and running by April, I mean, I think she said, yeah, April 1st. So we're hoping to have it up and running, but we have to, right, we have to send out all the notifications to all the parents. We have to get all the consents back. So there's.
Is it fair to ask that if you have a number prior, whenever you have a number for what's officially been billed out, if we can get an update of some kind? I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be a full report, but if there's a line item in the superintendent's report or something like that, that would be helpful. Thank you, Mrs. Guin.
Mine's more of just a comment rather than a question. I just wanted to thank you for mentioning the feeding and swallowing because I think that's something that's not on a lot of people's radars as a service that might be needed or that, a service that we might need to provide for our students and knowing that there are a number of them. Those are the types of things, when we say medically fragile, that's an example of what that can look like for people that, I just thought that was a good example, and I appreciate you bringing it up.
Thank you.
Mr. Friesen.
Just to circle back to your question in the beginning, Mr. Schulman, about the 34 for 21 for consultant fees. That was also contracted services for folks out on leave in this department. This is a very specialized area, and that was exactly what that was for, similar to the school psychologist in the previous account.
That was, it was a very big year.
Absolutely. It was a very challenging year in our office.
Does everyone, does everyone know what we're talking about? Okay. Maternity leave, there was, there were, okay, great. Lot of, lot of pregnancies at the same time, which is great.
Very exciting times.
Yeah. Further questions in speech hearing? Seeing none, we will turn to health nursing services. That is the third yellow tab, so we are going backwards.
Lastly, we are going to review the nursing budget for 2018-19. So the major goals are to promote safe and healthy community in which students will thrive, promote and teach self-management and self-advocacy skills for students who have health and medical conditions. Thank you. Facilitate day-to-day typical responses to injuries and health issues as well as intervene with more significant issues. The program description, nurses provide annual vision and hearing postural screenings to appropriate grade levels annually and make referrals to outside medical providers if necessary. They facilitate physicals and examinations with a medical advisor if required. They manage and oversee many 504 plans as well as provide services and accommodations through those 504 plans. They are responsible for state reporting of immunization surveys, asthma incidence reporting, and yearly health services. Nurses distribute medications in accordance to the physician's orders. They provide training and consultation to staff. Nurses are responsible for annual trainings on EpiPen injections, CPR, and general first aid. And nurses are also an integral part of the PBT team in many cases. So there are no program improvements or changes. Their program needs are permanently looking to. Their program needs are permanently looking to increase their contracted days from 188 to 190 for additional summer hours. They would like a copy machine in the high school nurse's office because of high demands of copies. They would like to replace scales, cots, wheelchairs, odometers, and digital thermometers on a rotating basis to minimize costs. And they would like to investigate the ability to renovate restrooms to make them handicap accessible at John Patterson and Anna Reynolds. And going over to the right-hand pages, I believe there was, there was a decrease for EpiPens, right? And I think that that is it.
Just to clarify, so that was, in other supplies, there's a $6,000 decrease because EpiPens are less expensive than you expected? Is that, or...
I think...
Or what's going, that's what that $6,000 decrease from the program request is?
The nursing administrator...
The nursing administrator is often able to get some grant-funded EpiPens, so it reduces her cost. So in a conversation with her, asked her if she thought that was coming forward again. She did. So she was able to make that reduction.
Okay. So that's that $6,000 reduction from the program request to the superintendent's proposal.
Correct.
Mr. Sylvia, you had something then?
Yeah, I mean, the first thing that jumped out at me was that, a printer. Do we not have network printing?
We do, yes.
We do.
So why are we wanting a separate copier?
Mostly for student record confidentiality.
They don't want things about their student records being printed in another area?
They need to, like, race off to the copy machine and stand there to make sure it doesn't get integrated. So in my office, Wendy could print something, I would print something, and we'd cull through it and I would separate Wendy's documents from mine. If it's a student, student's health record, I would not want someone going into the main copy room, looking at that copy machine where we print to, and then having to sort through their documents and a student's health records. Those are private.
So it's a convenience and timing issue that they have to then walk to wherever the printer that they print at is?
All right. So let me be a little more clear then. Everybody has a badge, correct?
Yes.
All right. With RFID technology in it? All right. If you might investigate one printer possibly in the network, only the individual's RFID can authorize the printing of a specific request. So therefore, it's not like an automatic, a print request goes out and then it ends up in yours or Wendy's pile. It's basically the nurse asks for print and then when she finally does walk on over to the printer...
So, so this is more for, this is more for copying than it is for printing? So if a family comes in and they need a copy of their medical for, the student is applying to a program and they need a copy of their physical, the nurse either hesitate the entire medical file with her down the hall to make the printer copy because we usually have combination of printer copiers?
Again, I come back to the network. All right. It's a simple neat scanner that costs $99, is connected to the nurse's computer, and then the particular document is sent to the network printer and with the RFID card, it is then authorized to print. So therefore, there's no need to walk around with the files or anything of this nature for any action. And the individual can also do a fax activity. I am sure that we have these types of printers in our facilities. It's just a matter of how you want to address it. So, though I understand the need, I think there's another solution that you could consider, utilizing the technology that we have available to us. I'm surprised that our CIO has not been able to offer that type of a solution.
Have that solution available. The nurses would like something right in their office.
All right.
It is their request. But everything that you spoke to is exactly what we have district-wide.
And what line item is that request on?
It's not...
It is a program need. It's not in the budget.
Oh. No need.
It's a request so that they ask...
It's a program, okay, it's not in the budget. Thank you.
Were there hands here?
There were.
All three of you?
Yes.
And you've, you vote, you all, just so we're clear, you voted for Ms. Dros to go first?
Yeah.
Okay. Fine by me.
Oh, next question I had is...
Oh, Mr. Sylvia was not done. Mrs. Dros, you're going to have to wait. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Sylvia, please go ahead.
Anna Reynolds and John Patterson are not ADA compliant?
That is correct. The bathroom configuration each is approximately three feet wide by about five, five and a half feet long. Minimum ADA configuration requires the ability to be able to do a full circle for a wheelchair which is 16 inches diameter.
I know ADA, yeah.
Right. And it will require a significant reworking of the space which would compromise the nurse's work area in both locations because of where the bathroom is. You know, it may necessitate actually putting a small addition on the building as a bump out to be able to handle the ADA expectations for that particular program.
So this is a CIP-type request?
Correct. Correct, yes. It's more substantial than a weekend job.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Dros, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. All right. A quick question. You said that we, you requested funding for EpiPens. I'm very confused why the school is purchasing EpiPens.
Because we have to.
Why? Like, I, like, I really, I'm not being facetious, like, I don't...
We have to. It's a mandate.
From, from who?
The state.
So the state...
And how many?
Were they using grant? Were they using some grant money?
Some grant money.
So like, every child who has a medical need for one, we have to have one?
It's not related to the number of students?
So the, so if I have a, if I have a bee sting allergy and I bring in an EpiPen, that's my EpiPen.
Right.
But we have to have a set amount of EpiPens. I think it's dependent on how many people or how many students are in your building so that it is accessible to them because I can't take Joey's EpiPen if Karen is having an issue. I have to have an EpiPen on, in my possession to use for Karen. I can't use someone else's. So we are now mandated...
So it's in case someone goes into, like, anaphylactic shock to have, it's not, someone who has a first cut, okay?
An unknown allergy. An unknown allergy, yep.
Mr. Brandon.
So, the, piggybacking off of Mr. Sylvia's renovation, so does that go to the compliance committee? How do, what is the process for that in terms of investigating? Because right now, it just says investigate the ability. It's not asking to get it done. What is the process for kicking that off?
Right now, so typically, it would be an OCR requirement, right? So that, that's what kicks off compliance doing projects?
Correct. Yeah, if we get cited by the OCR.
The OCR is the Office of Civil Rights, the federal entity that does ADA compliance?
We have not been cited for this, but the schools are all technically ADA compliant, but we do have non-ADA elements to the buildings. The ADA compliance is achieved at these schools by the students needing to use the lavatory facilities somewhere else that are on an ADA acceptable pathway to it. You know, but if you have an ill student in, that's in the nurse's room, do you really want them going down to the general bathroom because of the circumstances? That's really the issue.
Okay. So the facilities are ADA compliant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just those specific bathrooms at the nurse's.
This is a, okay, I understand the request now.
And then, the replacing of the high-cost items, is there some sort of, well, how often are they replaced? And then, is, are any of those at more of a specific need than others? Do you know? I know it's a request, so I'm just wondering.
I believe that Mrs. Heatherington has that plan. I know a couple of years ago, they were able to get new scales and then before that, they were able to get a couple of new wheelchairs. So she does have it on a more rotating basis. It's just she'd like to have the insurance, the assurance that she wouldn't have to sort of continue to ask. They would be automatically rotated with, through the budget at a given amount.
Mrs. Guyan, did those answer your questions?
Yes. They did.
Fair enough. Mr. Sylvia, did you have something else?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Mrs. Stam, then Dr. Braverman.
Okay. I just made a, I may have missed something. So in the renovations for Anna Reynolds and Patterson's handicap accessible, are those the nurse, those are the ones in the nurses' offices? Okay. So just to make it, again, I think you said that, but I spaced it.
Thank you. Dr. Braverman.
So how, I know from, I serve on the crack board, that the nurses give, spend a great proportion of their day giving out medications and shots and other things. Is that true here as well?
Yep.
And we have the staff to, to manage it and the refrigerators and the other things?
So far, yes.
So far.
Okay. Do you know, ballpark percentage of students needing medication on a daily basis?
I don't have that number, but I can get that for you if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Dros.
Okay, I'm learning a lot tonight. Staff physicals? What is the nurse providing for staff physicals? It says staff physicals for $4,500. $326.
Yep.
I can address that for you. At times when new staff members are hired, they're required to get a physical at our expense. That is where we pay for it.
So we then pay an outside provider to perform the physical?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know. Thank you.
Mr. Sylvia.
Is the nurse certified to give a physical?
The nurses are not giving the physicals, no.
We need a full-time physician to do that?
No, this is a contract service.
To a certified nurse?
No, they, they would go to a doctor.
To a doctor? All right, that's...
Typically, it's their own doctor. They, instead of submitting the insurance, the insurance request to their insurance or pay out of pocket, they hand us the bill.
Thank you.
What type of positions require that? I can't hear. I'm sorry.
Transportation, custodial, they require physicals. Maintenance.
Any further questions in this category? I forgot cough drops. Seeing none, thank you very much, Merrillina. I do want to take a quick pulse of the room again to see if we want a five-minute break. It was, Mr., Bob's leaving anyway. It was my hope that we would finish all of this by around 10 o'clock. Unlike the town council, we don't have anything that precludes us from continuing past a certain hour. Traditionally, we've stopped around 10 because we have a second night of this and everyone has to be here anyway. I just want to take a pulse of the room. Are we good until 10, 10:30? You know, just let me know. Mr. Sylvia's here all night, I know.
I'm ready to be here all night.
You're ready to be here all night and I appreciate that. And we do have tomorrow with, should be shorter things, but I want to take a pulse of the room and be respectful of people's evenings and work schedules and...
I would agree with that.
We're, we're seeing around...
Power break in bed.
So it's my suggestion then that we continue on until about 10 o'clock. Then we break for the evening and recommence tomorrow at 7:00 PM with our previously scheduled meeting wherever we leave off here. Seems about right to everyone and I expect tomorrow will probably go until about 10 o'clock as well. Do we want to take a quick two or three minutes? Are we good till 10?
Good.
I'm good.
All right. Let's go. Apologies to Bob. We're going to move on and obviously, if anyone needs to stretch their legs, please feel free. We're going to move on to mathematics, which is our first pink tab. This is also an item that requires us to re-change the budget page right now and we will welcome, for her first program of the evening, Mrs. Kraus. If you just give us one moment to switch out.
Good evening, everybody. Certainly.
I didn't get a map of that. Who you say did?
Well, good evening. So we'll end the evening on a high note with Pamela and myself, right? So the first program I'm going to talk to you about is mathematics and you'll see in the major goals that we have a focus in this program on balancing the understanding of procedural fluency and conceptual understanding. And what we've learned over time is that when we, when students rely too heavily on procedural understanding and mathematics, they really struggle in higher-level math. We tend to hide it at the lower levels, but in higher-level math, that's where you see those issues. So we've worked very hard at revising our curriculum and purchasing new materials to support that balance in the lower levels. And then we have a large emphasis on application and real-world problem solving so that students are seeing the relevance of math. We know that a lot of people say, "I don't use that in my life." Actually, we use a lot of math. We're not even aware of it, so we try to show students that. So one of the things that has changed this year is that we've adopted a new math program in grades K through 4. It's called Investigations. It has a focus on everything I just said. The students really go through a lot of discovery and inquiry in this program, so it accomplishes a lot of our goals. We're seeing a lot of success so far. We're just getting preliminary data in and we're seeing some positive things. We also have made some changes over the last several years so that we're seeing increasing numbers of our middle school students that are taking Algebra I and geometry at the middle level. We're seeing students receive one and two credits before they get to the high school, so they're actually accessing higher-level math at higher rates. So we've made all of these adjustments, but what we're seeing now is a need in the area of foundations for algebra and that you'll see to the, under the program improvements. That is a gap that we're still looking at where we see a population of students who get to the high school, they've been receiving interventions for a number of years and they've been closing a lot of other gaps. So they don't really have a solid foundation for Algebra I. This course will meet that need for that, that small population of students because we know that if they don't have the firm foundation and they're not successful in Algebra I, everything else starts to build on that, so they, they aren't successful for years afterwards. So this is a solution that we're putting in place to address that. You will also see some program needs around the research design and offering of some engineering courses and internships that Mrs. Lojoi would like to pursue in the future. If you look over to the right-hand page, you'll see that while the funding is level over last year, there is a decrease, significant decrease, from 1617. That is primarily due to the 641 account where we purchased the materials for the K4 program. So that was a significant one-time purchase. And then you will also see that we are about $10,000 lower than the requests that we received. And as we've talked about tonight, most of those supplies that were cut were things that would enhance, especially at the elementary level, it's a lot of workshop model that we do. So maybe materials to supplement that we can make adjustments for and still run the program. You'll also see that there is a decrease in the workbooks. That's a significant decrease from the requests and that was really at the middle level where they were asking for a number of workbooks to supplement some of the things we're seeing to prepare kids appropriately for S-Back. And we've been able to reduce that in a large amount of being creative of how we're going to use those materials differently for smaller groups of kids.
There we go. Is it right that the decrease in certified positions from 1617 to this current school year is due to layoffs last year? Okay. Mrs. Dros.
Can you explain? I had asked this weekend for explanation. They told me to ask you why in 201617, line 112, was 40,000 and the request is now 158.
I believe they meant you should ask Mr. Jackamowitz, so I will...
All righty. They just said to ask this today, so I'm asking. So it's just, it's a huge increase and I don't, I don't...
Yes.
One of the items that I included on the cover memo to the board members tonight about budget, you know, touched on that. One of the requirements we had this year in prepping the budget for going to next year One of the requirements we had this year in prepping the budget for going to next year with new state reporting requirements by school, we ended up doing a 100% restructuring of our salary database as far as everybody and where they are in all of the positional elements and, you know, where everything falls. You know, in, in doing that work, all that's set up perfect in the new request for going forward. We have not had the opportunity to go back and fix the 1718 budget, to recast that in exactly the same fashion. You know, it probably took about 40 man-hours of work to rebuild that whole information structure for ourselves to be able to do that. And this is just a reclassification within, between the 111 and 112 accounts. You know, certain, you know, individuals are classified in certain places for different purposes like grant coordination and as things change over the last few years, all that needs to be made contemporary. This is just strictly something for hourly staff and tutorial staff. It's nothing else.
So is there somewhere else in the budget where there's a big decrease?
Yeah, there's other offsets to that. It is up a little bit, but it's overall, it's a zero transfer between everything is what it'll ultimately net out, net out to be.
So I hate to sound new, but I am. Like where, so like you said, you realoc, it sounds like a reallocation where you put this in. So like, I mean, it's just, it's a huge, it's like an 89% increase.
In that one area, but there's other...
Do you know, like where?
Significant things that are down. Like one I can point to is in the computer or technology instruction area. Technology instruction, the 1008 program. I know that we had, previously had computer lab tutors, monitors, one for the high school, one for each of the two middle schools. With the advent of the Chromebooks and how that has evolved, it's really made the positions obsolete and not necessary anymore. You know, still tutorial work for the district in different areas. It's a matter of that, those dollars are being placed in the placeholder where they would be most beneficial instead of in a job that's basically been obsolete.
So it's not necessarily taken out of here, it's just taken out of...
I can't, that has to be a formal board action.
Right.
So I'm...
It's in other spots, the project, okay. I got you. Thank you.
Mrs. Guy?
That, I do not get it. You lost me somewhere.
Okay.
This, so this one, so you just said that some positions were...
It's the evolution of how the whole organization works over time. We've had a few of those where...
That I get.
Right.
But I don't understand how this number got to be so big right here in math.
So between language arts and math are where we put all the emphasis of learning tutors, both for intervention purposes and for general support around the district. This just reflects, that's where the focal point is of support in the district. So all of the assignments, many tutors work on a generalist basis where they'll support a student across the whole curriculum. But to try to, the same criticisms as we have for teachers, if we start splitting out everybody into five or six different programs, it sort of dilutes the impact and the ability to manage and focus on it. So this kind of really brings it back to the two critical areas between language arts and math as far as that's where the emphasis of, you know, substantial tutorial support's gonna be.
So you're gonna see a decrease in tech?
Okay. Hang on. Let me, let me summarize to see if I understand. So all of our support tutors were kind of spread out in different places and things evolved and now they're all...
Trying to pull back in and really...
Kind of clumped here. So it's not an additional, it's...
No, it's, yeah, trying to focus them in the major programs.
Okay. So that's, that's where, right, that's just where they are all sitting right now.
Right. You're more of a focus on LA, on reading and math and where, so we don't need more people, well, we need more people in those areas, but we don't need them in like computer labs anymore.
Yeah, okay.
All the money got, you'll see an increase in these areas, but a decrease in those other areas.
So did that just, that, I can't imagine that all of that just happened this year.
Well, with the reclassification, right.
It's been accumulation over several years and when you have the transitory nature of some of these grants like Title I, which certain schools are eligible this year, but they're not eligible next year, we have all these grant compliance rules, we have to also consider as far as how we structure this. And it, trying to just simplify everything and make it more, if you want to say transparent, that's really what the net result will be in this. But there's a transition element to it to get from where we are right now in 1718 to be able to present in that fashion consistently going forward.
Okay. That, thank you. Now I understand.
So, so are we talking about in, in education technology, there's like a $40,000 decrease in the 112 account?
Right.
And there's also about a $40,000 decrease in the 112 account in social studies?
Right.
And those are two of the areas that are aligned to this increase in math and the increase in ELA and reading?
Correct.
You will also see that in science and in STEM.
Thank you, that was very helpful.
STEM, I see science, I see the same amount.
If you would bring in science for 61, 52, it's going into 19 for next year. In the 112 account?
The increase.
The decrease. So if you're going from 60, like that...
If you're looking at the 112 account in 1718, it's 61,000 and you're looking at it in 1819 at 19,000. So those tutors were reallocated, that's why you're seeing the decrease.
The reality is they're not really working in social studies, they're primarily working in math and reading.
You did it already. It was corrected. I have the old one, you're right.
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. Are these tutors non-certified staff?
Yes, they're not working under teaching certification. Some individuals will have a potential teaching degree or a college degree, but, you know, they will not necessarily have a state of Connecticut teaching certificate.
Do they receive benefits and everything of that nature?
No.
No. So it's like the other conversation we had, they're just, here's your stipend for the day for being...
Right. They're now early employed.
All right. Well, then that, that helps explains the point too and, all right, thank you.
Right, they're not included in that.
Miss Droes?
This is back to the direct math question. The $7,372 for workbooks?
Yes.
You know, obviously, we've been talking about being as mindful as we can with the budget. Is that, you had asked for 15,000, I assume that's like a per student, now it almost like seems like half. Is it even beneficial to be purchasing them? Do you know, and I'm not saying this correctly. Obviously, that's not enough to buy every child.
Right. So we purchased, what we did is we prioritized and we looked at the need for some of our students that are receiving intervention, so we purchased for smaller groups of students and then we purchased some materials for classroom use to support small group instruction, but not a book for every child. We didn't, not every child is going to need it.
Okay, I'm gonna sound, and the same resource is not available online?
Not for this. This is, this is a specific need, a specific resource that they're looking at, yes. We do, you'll see a lot of reductions in the core areas where the teachers are accessing a lot of things online, but particularly in math, there's some things that kids need to do paper and pencil, this isn't something they can do on their Chromebook, or we, you do something online, you print it all out and copy it, and then we have copyright issues too. So this was actually a cheaper way to do it.
We just, do we, do we need that?
We do.
Okay. So we're having a slight technical issue with, with the tape?
Just like changing the tape, you know, just have to wait.
Guess three hours and 45 minutes is the time limit for it? Mr. Sylvia?
If I may, Wendy, you mentioned that the reduction in staff, approximately 1.5, that was because of layoffs. Do we need the 48.82 or we're comfortable with the 47.36?
Do we need it? I mean, I think that was from the high school level.
I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we, I think we might actually have to stop our discussion right now until we know that it's being recorded.
Understood. I can ask again.
Yeah. We've never had the issue. Does it make, does it make more sense to pause here because this may take 15 minutes or longer?
I second that.
Deb, hold on.
Deb?
Hold on.
Board, I, honestly, this has not happened in seven years, so my suggestion is we call for a motion, we table the rest of this and move to adjourn until tomorrow night since we, we do have a statutory obligation to record our meetings and right now we may not be doing so.
So that's, I make a motion?
Let's, we can move and discuss it?
I object.
So we need to make a motion?
Yeah, someone make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn based on the fact, whoops.
You can just say that to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, by Mr. Brandon, Mr. Sylvia, discussion?
I wanna go all night.
I, I hear ya and...
I disagree with that.
He can take his battery, put it in there, right?
Any other discussion on adjourning? And I, I do want to be clear for the public, this is a strange circumstance. We were planning on adjourning at 10 o'clock anyway. We have a meeting at 7 o'clock tomorrow to continue our workshop of the budget and our program review. All of these items are going to be covered and that means tomorrow night, pretty much no matter how long this goes, we're, we are going to finish this.
We start at 7?
We start at 7 o'clock tomorrow. There's a curriculum committee meeting at 5:30 tomorrow. Is there any further discussion on the motion to adjourn or anything else? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Sylvia, the motion passes eight to one. We are adjourned and we will reconvene tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Thank you.